All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for Wednesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll begin with a rule call of members. Amy Wall.
Yeah.
Jim McBane.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
All right. So again, for the record, Tom Lucy is detained at work. Hopefully, he'll be along during the course of the hearing. And Chip Darbell is away and won't be with us this evening. So let's proceed to the legal notice, if you would please, Ms. Wall.
Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number. One three zero one seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID nine six five five eight three three five seven seven eight, passcode four five zero one three eight. Please only use dial-in or computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information on materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renaud, town engineer, at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One continued hearings, two twenty-two dash thirty-five, William G. Canton and Phyllis L. Canton, application for a potty aggrieved appealing. The order slash notice of building inspector dated December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The property is shown as map eight Lot Passos N A four of the assessors map and is located at six Winship Drive. Three twenty-two dash thirty-six Derrick and Christina Poppick. Application for a special permit under section one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to raise an existing detached garage and construct an attached garage with the master bedroom slash bathroom laundry office and kitchen extension. The property is shown as map twenty-eight Lot Passos zero zero six of the assessors map and is located at two fifty-nine Vernon Street, Court of Appeals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So we have a few administrative things to take up first, which we will do so at this time. So we have a memo from attorney Brian McGrail dated today, February ninth regarding S G D Management Group LLC, ninety-seven to ninety-nine Water Street, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers twenty-one dash forty-three and forty-four. Request that we continue the matter to our March ninth hearing, still in the process of finalizing conditions with the Department of Public Work as it relates to the proposed infrastructure improvements.
I move that we move that we continue the hearing to our next hearing, March ninth.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Oh.
Done.
Yes, it is. How are you? Pretty good.
Dave.
All right, Mickey, sorry, I do mute you.
You might want to mute his phone.
Yeah, I did. So Greg, would you mind voting on this one?
Sure. Good question, though. Is it the next meeting is March ninth? Do we not have?
I'm sorry, to the March ninth meeting.
Oh, okay, all right.
Request for March ninth.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Clarification, any other discussion on the motion? All right. So all in favor, Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. So if anyone's here for that, hopefully, we'll hear it on March ninth and we'll be able to wrap this one up because we are close. Okay. Also for attorney Brian McGrail dated February ninth, reporting William G. Keton and Phyllis L. Keton. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing the name correctly. Sorry if I'm not. If you're here, six Winship Drive, Wakefield, case number twenty-two dash thirty-five. The request respectfully request to continue this matter until our meeting on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Because we have spoken in detail with the building inspector and we're in the process of resolving his enforcement order to his satisfaction and in compliance with the requirements of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. It also, the letter confirms on behalf of their client that they agree to extend the time for the board to render and or file a decision on this matter until May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So again, this was a new, this was a new map tonight, and it was an appeal of a building inspector order. So the request is to continue that while they work out in agreement, it sounds like. So the request is to continue to May third, April thirteenth and to extend the hearing. So we need two votes. One to continue and one to extend the time for us to render a decision ultimately to May thirty-first.
All right. I've moved that we continue it to April thirteenth.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
All right. Dave, just as a clarification, I'm going to butter on this. I'll just recuse myself right off the bat from everything.
Related to this Winship Drive?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So Mickey, you with us? Come back off mute. If you don't, all right, thank you. So we'll need you to vote on this one. So any discussion on the motion? Okay. All in favor. So Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is unanimous. Now we need a separate motion to extend the time for us to render a decision till May thirty-first.
So let me see this. I move that we grant an extension to May eleventh. Is that what it's May eleventh?
May thirty-first.
I'm sorry, May thirty-first. Is that even a meeting day?
No, it just gives us time to render a decision. After we close the hearing, so.
All right. So I moved to we extended to May thirty-first.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion to extend the time for us to render a decision? Yes.
I was just going to add that. Okay.
Yep. Just for clarification for the record. Yep. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. Same voting members, Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. So if anyone's here for six Winship that potentially would come back in April, we'll see if it gets how they progress offline with the building inspector. Lastly, also from attorney Brian McGrail dated today regarding Elite Framing Metal and Construction Inc., six eleven Salem Street, case number twenty-one dash thirty-eight. Again, we heard this last time. But this request is to continue the matter to our second meeting in the March, which would be March twenty-third. I anticipate we will be requesting to withdraw without prejudice at that time. Again, this was another aggrieved party by the building inspector that then turned into a separate application, which we rendered a decision on. But this, this is the other aspect to it, and Brian can clarify if anyone has any questions. So, so again, the request is continue to March twenty-third, our second hearing in March, and also continue a separate motion to extend the time for us to render a decision until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
All right. I move that we continue the hearing to March twenty-third.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion on the motion? So Brian, would you mind just clarifying again, just for the other board members?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing the petitioner. This was a matter that you may recall that we appealed an order of the building inspector, and it resulted in subsequent applications to resolve the matter, which were recently approved by the board, which in essence makes this, will make this appeal moot. And that's why I stated that we anticipated withdrawing it. We, we still have to go through the twenty-day appeal period on the approvals that your board granted to resolve the matter. So I need to keep this appeal alive during that appeal period in case an appeal were filed. So once the appeal period on the relief is granted, is expired and those decisions become final, then I'll be requesting you withdraw this without prejudice.
Right. But the point is, we had to adjudicate that original appeal of the, of the building inspectors order, one way or another, we have to adjudicate that, even though we subsequently got applications and approved them.
That's right. So if it wasn't closed out, it would be, it would in essence be constructively granted. And, and that's why it's, it's got to be withdrawn for the record to, to, to void it out.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that. Hopefully, that helps anyone with questions. So that's under discussion. Any other discussion to continue to March twenty-third? Okay. Same voting members, Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Amy?
She's, she's, her screen is frozen out. She's going to have to log back in, I think.
Okay. So we'll go with Greg and Mike on this. Again, it's, it's to continue. So I think we're fine. Move just continue. Hopefully, Amy can rejoin us shortly. So so you and Joe both voted, Greg?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So now we'll need another motion to extend the time for the board to render or file a decision to March thirty-first.
I've moved that we extend the time to March thirty-first to render a decision.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? All right. Same voting members, Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So again, we'll, we'll adjudicate this one or another at the second hearing in March. Okay. I know we've got a couple of, we have two continued hearings and one new hearing plus a couple of other matters. One of the other matters is a request to extend the time to implement a comprehensive permit. And I see there the applicant here, I'm going to suggest board members, maybe we take this one up sometimes. If we think things like this could be done at a reasonable time, rather than make them wait for all the other hearings, maybe we could take this up first. So Brian, if you wouldn't mind, I know you've got one on Harvard Mills, but again, we could probably take that after all the other ones as well, because you're still here. So Mr. Kenworthy, are you with us?
Mr. Kenworthy is here. Hi.
Hello, welcome.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you.
So just wanted to forward you the opportunity. Again, I know you're into other matters tonight. We would normally take it up at the end, but sometimes that can be pretty late. We'll see how things go tonight. Can you just explain to us? I know you sent a letter. Would you mind summarizing for all the board members again, and for the record, just what you're looking to do regarding nine ninety-eight one thousand Main Street between Wood State LLC project?
Sure. Basically requesting an extension of time to implement the comprehensive granted permit granted previously November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen for nine ninety-eight dash one thousand Main Street. Unfortunately, everybody else have been held up due to construction delays and COVID. Also, you know, material, all sorts of different items going on here due to COVID and labor issues. I'm working on a couple of multi-unit buildings right now in different cities, surrounding cities. And, you know, elevators have been delayed for six to nine months. So many issues of that nature. So that's why I'm requesting an extension on this. I am getting ready my construction documents. So I do intend to submit those, hopefully, to the building department within about, I'd say, four to five months at this time.
Okay. So this was approved in November of two thousand and nineteen, and that comprehensive permit runs for three years to sort of get a building permit, begin construction, right?
I believe that's correct. Yep.
And Gail can jump in because I'm sure she's well-versed in some of that, too. So you're requesting that we extend that for another year?
That's correct.
November of two thousand and twenty-three. And that is allowed pursuant to the mass general law that you cite here.
Okay.
No, I'm asking, you're stating that.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I, I believe that's the case. Yes. Yep.
Okay. Greg, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. You're one of our resident attorneys.
Yeah, it is allowed, and essentially we can't unreasonably deny it. You know, if we wanted, obviously, unreasonable is a subjective term. Yeah, I don't know if it's time for me to give my thoughts on it, but yeah, that's essentially it. We can extend it and really should extend it unless there's reasonable cause not to.
Yep. Well, I can certainly appreciate, you know, everything that COVID has done to a lot of projects and a lot of things in our society in general, and for construction and materials and labor and everything else. So totally get that. Seems reasonable. Again, I, I know we've extended variances in different ways for like six months to a year, you know, you know. I think the circumstances warrant it. I just wanted to make sure that, again, we need to be comfortable that sending it, say, a year is reasonable, is a reasonable ask versus, you know, six months or two years.
Yeah, definitely, definitely going to need a year minimum at this point. So hopefully, you don't have to come back again. I mean, if you want to grant me two years, that's great. But but my, my intention is, you know, construction documents and then getting set up the basically comprehensive permit and get all that squared away. So that's, that's my intent, and I appreciate if you guys would give me an extension.
Okay. Any other comments or input, board members, other board members?
If I'm gonna, I'm going to recuse myself because I was having computer problems. I didn't hear the beginning of this.
Okay. Welcome back. We do, we do. Okay. So again.
Just take a vote?
I think, I think, yeah, we do need a vote to extend the comprehensive permit to, the request is to November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That is, that is what we need.
All right. So I, I grant them an extension to November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three on the comprehensive permit for the forty B.
Okay. For a second on that vote?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any comments or discussion on the motion? All right. So Greg and Mickey will need you as well on this one. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. So we look forward to the project. We wondered what was happening with it, obviously, Kenworthy. So glad to hear you. You definitely want to proceed with it. And hopefully, this will allot you the time to do so, and we look forward to seeing some progress in the coming year.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for taking me at the beginning of the meeting. I appreciate that.
All right. Have a good night.
Thanks. All of you. Thanks.
Well, Gail, I can work with them offline and get a letter to you for the record. I know we need a letter for this, so.
Yes, that would be good.
All right. All right. Now that takes us to our first continued hearing of the evening, and that is twenty-one dash thirty-seven Crescent Commons Development LLC at forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight Crescent Street.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail here for the petitioner Crescent Commons LLC. If I may, Mr. Chair, I know Mr. Who's, Mr. Tabel's not here. Mr. Lucy isn't here yet. Do you, could we possibly, could I respectfully request that we go over the status of board members on this?
Sure.
I just don't want to jeopardize not having a quorum at some point. It's been going on for quite a while.
Right. We opened February tenth of last year, so we are now coming up on the first anniversary. So I have attended every hearing, so I'm on it. Jim has attended every hearing. Amy has attended every hearing. So the three of us are on it. Tonight would be the first chip would miss. So assuming he gets caught up, he could be back on it. And so me, Jim, Amy, and Joe. Joe, did you get caught up? I see you missed in August. Did you?
Yeah, I think, I believe I, I believe I signed the F, David.
I believe it's in there.
You think it is? Okay. So I usually try to mark up the attending sheet when I see that. But I'll, I'll confirm you believe that to be true. So I'll double check here in the background, Brian, but we think myself, Jim, Amy, Joe are on it. And Chip, again, if this is the only meeting he misses, he could be back on it.
Okay. And Greg and Mike, Greg and Mickey and Tom, good?
Greg is good. He missed one, but signed and caught up.
Great.
Mickey missed one. I don't know. Again, I'll check the records here. He missed one. And Tom, this would be his first missing. So I think generally, we've got enough. I think.
We got enough. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And if, if the folks who missed one meeting are caught up, then I think you got a full quorum.
Thank you. I just didn't want to make a catastrophic mistake at this stage.
I appreciate that. Yep.
So, hey, thank you. Appreciate it. So I think, I think we can, we can move forward. So if I may, Mr. Chair, since the last meeting with the full board, we've had a number of subcommittee meetings on this with board member Wall, McBane, and, and also board member Pride has filled in in a role as a subcommittee person when Amy wasn't able to make it. And we appreciate all the time that they've put in. It's, it's involved really revising and fine tuning these plans in detail. It's involved working with the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department to come up with a reasonable location for the transformer. And it's a good thing we did that because that was a little bit tricky, and I think we came up to some good, good solutions on that. And, and Dave Paulson, we thank him from Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light. He actually attended one of the subcommittee meetings and participated to work that out. It's involved not only the plans, but a draft decision, which has been submitted to the board with a number of conditions. And we worked and fine tuned that through the subcommittee meetings. It involves an operation and maintenance plan that was derived through the decision with a number of things in it that were discussed through the hearings with the board. And the, that draft decision also has updated waivers that are spot on and match the site plan. So that was, that was worked out. So a lot of time has gone into this. I thank those subcommittee members. Some of the neighbors participated. Thank them in, in, in attended. And I think it's, it's a lot of work that will pay dividends in the future on the project. So with that said, I think I can kind of maybe walk you through some of these. I think I should maybe start with the plans and then go from there, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Sounds good.
And I do, I do want to add, Mr. Chair, you would, you would kind of mandated that we follow the, the template of the Tarrant Lane decision, which, which Greg and Amy had worked on when, when they were on the subcommittee on that project. And we did do that, and it was, it worked out really well because it was a good template. I think we, I think we fine tuned it for this project, but it definitely worked as a good template going through this. So that said, I'm going to start with the architectural plans. And Peter Sandus is here. I should say the Bachelis are here as usual. Peter Sandus is here also. And Rick Salo's on call if we need him. He had another meeting, but if we do need him, I can, I can dial him in and he'll hop right on. I don't think we're going to, but just in case. So this is the, what we're hoping will be the final architectural plan. This is the color that was chosen, recommended by the subcommittee, and I think blessed by the board at the last meeting. It's a nice color palette. This is the front of the building on Crescent Street. As you can see, it's got the veneer on the foundations, the landscaping matches, and you'll see that as we go through. This is the Crescent Hill side of the building. The veneer is also on the chimney or the elevator, which looks like the chimney, the elevator penthouse. The first thing that we did, or the subcommittee required that we do, and we did it, and it was, I think, a good choice, is they wanted us to designate, if you remember, we've committed ten parking spaces exclusively for visitor parking. And they wanted us to designate those where they're going to be. So it wouldn't just be like, hey, we're just going to keep ten parking spaces open, pull in the garage and go find one. And then we don't have any semblance of organization on how it's run or operated or ability to keep track of what's going on in those visitor spaces. You may recall visitor spaces are only in the garage that enters from Crescent Street, not from Crescent Hill. So what was decided was the best place for those visitor parking spaces would be two on the outside. So if people are pulling in for something quick, maybe to drop something in the package room or a quick visit, they might decide, hey, it's a nice day. I'm not going to go in the garage. I can just park here. And, and I can walk around or go in on a nice day. So those were like screaming out to be visitor parking spaces. And then it was decided that the best place for the remaining visitor parking spaces would be right inside the garage. So when people pull in to visit, they don't have to go searching through the garage for visitor space. So we, you can see these are designated on this architectural plan is V. And there's one over here. The handicap spaces are available for the visitors here also. Nice, easy access to the elevator. Very easy to monitor to make sure that residents aren't abusing those and using them as their own because they're all bunched together and right at the entry of the garage. Also, on projects like this, the board has been sensitive that they don't want wasted energy with the parking garage or light pollution outside any openings of the garage. So they want the lights, you've wanted the lights on sensors. So the subcommittee wanted us to put that note on here. It notes the ten visitor parking space and the lights are on sensors in the garage, just so that's documented on the plan. This is just, this is the upper garage. Okay. Again, the sensors, as you can see, no visitor parking spaces. This is off of Crescent Hill. And there's directional sign, no left turn. You might have noticed in the draft decision, the board anticipates that there'll be a need for other directional signage with the project to deter visitors from going up Crescent Hill to let them know that there's no visitor parking up there, to direct the, the deliveries of packages to the Crescent Street loading area. So we actually put in the condition that the board reserves the right to, to really tell us what you want for signage and where you want it in a directional basis. Once a building is constructed, so you can get a good idea how it will relate to land state escaping the building, and then it won't have any negative aesthetic impact on the project on the neighborhood. So that has been contemplated in the written decision. The other thing that Mr. Tabel had asked for, and he's not here, and the subcommittee made sure that we did it, was to kind of give a little detail on the ADA units. There'll be two full ADA units. We specified where they are, the unit eleven and unit twelve. And this kind of gives a little detail of, of the, of the kitchen and, and how it works from the height and and access perspective. But that's something that the board had asked, and the subcommittee made, made sure that we did that.
Okay. Okay.
These are just the floor plans. Really, nothing major has changed here. And this is just the fourth floor. And these are obviously elevations, which have been reviewed in detail. Not a lot of change on this, showing the veneer is required. I'm going too fast. I don't know if I'm making you dizzy. These are just.
Oh, yeah. As long as, yeah, you're pointing out any changes or substantive things.
If you want, if you caught up to me, so I'm showing now the details on the windows and the trim and.
Yes.
Yeah. So this is all stuff that Mr. McBane wanted on the subcommittee to really define the details on these windows and how they're going to be done in detail. So that's all been now properly labeled and put on the architectural plans.
Because there's three different styles throughout the building.
Correct.
Like they're noted there. Okay.
Yep. And then we get into the materials, the veneer, the colors, which have been chosen by the board, the brackets, the, you know, the handrails, all of that detail that is normally required by the board is now documented as part of the. all of that detail, um, that is normally required by the board is now documented as part of the architectural plans. As is more detail on the windows, the lighting, um, the louvers.
What's that laser cut signage? Again, refresh my memory where that potentially is.
That's just a sample. Um, there's, there's no, the decision calls for no signage is approved for the building yet. So this was just kind of put in there as an idea of what might happen, but it, it, the decision is clear that we have to come back for all signage. But that's what they're thinking. It would be like a laser cut wood sign that, and I think, I think where we're anticipating that will go, let me go back up to.
And it would say Crescent Commons because that's the name of the property.
Correct. Yeah. And and you can kind of see it on the elevation. Um, where we thought it might go, um, right here. Did my Zoom catch up to you?
Yep.
Okay, so right in that area. That's what we're thinking. We're two, two lights next to it.
There's a condition.
To see the detail of that sign in, in, in the decision reserves your right to do that.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And I thought we talked too about that maybe being stone.
It might, you know, I mean, that's why, you know, we don't, it hasn't been committed, Amy.
Okay.
It's wide open. It's your call.
I don't remember stone coming up as a discussion, Amy.
I remember at one point when we saw that, oh, I remember at one point that coming up, maybe it was in a full meeting. I don't remember, but I said I thought it was stone and that that would look nice.
You have to come back to us anyways. All right. Nothing's bad.
That's right.
Doesn't matter at this point.
No. And these are just more details on the, on the door, the doors that will be used. So that's, that's it on the architectural, um, kind of, let me, let me get to the, if I can, to the, um, the site plan because a lot of work, uh, went into the site plan as far as, uh, working again with the light department and stuff that the subcommittee required. Second, I've lost my, here we go. So the site plan, as I mentioned, involved not only work with the subcommittee, but the subcommittee and the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department and also with the, with the DPW and Town Engineering Department. Um, so they've seen, uh, we've worked with them through the process with the subcommittee. They've seen iterations, they've had requests, uh, notes that have been put on per their request. Um, they, I've gone through the, uh, conditions with, uh, the town engineer and the decision that he is satisfied that we've touched everything that that they were requiring. Um, and, you know, they've been, they've been, um, cooperative to work through this process. I, they actually issued a memo today, which is probably the cleanest memo I've seen. Or any problem was that working? Well, that's really did I draw? Um, I'll kind of highlight some of the things that have gone on this plan through work with the subcommittee. Um, so what we've done, um, we've cleaned up the zoning table. And that's reflected in the decision now. So the, the decision has all the waivers. I'll call that the, you know, the updated waiver list. That's in the draft decision. Um, there were a couple of typos in it, which I can show you that we've cleaned up since Friday. Um, but these are all the dimensional requirements, uh, that are clearly laid out. Um, the parking spaces are up here, as you can see. Um, we've got sixty-two were required with the project. We actually are providing seventy, so we've come a long way on that. Um, some of the spaces are smaller, as you note, as we noted, they're eight half instead of nine. So those are the C, it's indicated on the site plan. And the V indicates the visitor parking. So not only do we document the visitor parking on the, um, on the architectural plans, we've also docked it on the site plan where they, where those are and they work together. Um, and then we mentioned the transformer. So I'm gonna show you the parking first. So this, as you can see, matches, we've got the visitors all lined up, same as this is the Crescent Street side of the side of the, uh, building, then entry for that garage. So that matches the architectural. Um, as I've mentioned, a lot of work went, you know, the, the, the subcommittee was adamant that we got a commitment. We have, we originally proposed, if you remember, the original plan, um, had the wall going straight across here. So it was gonna stop here. And this, uh, I think it's about ten feet up. So we had anticipated that we would be able to place the transformer up high, up above the wall. Um, subcommittee then said, well, you better make sure you can do it. And it's a good thing they did because uh, we went to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department and, um, it took them a while to, to look at it. They initially, it was to the extent that one member came back and said, one member of the MLD came back and said, it's fine putting it up there. Then his boss said, no, it isn't because we're not gonna be able to service it. So we had to find a solution because what they had asked the subcommittee at the meeting was put it out here. We want it out front. Um, which, you know, we know from experience does not, uh, really meet the requirements, the design standards of this board. So, uh, subcommittee told them that's not going to work. So what was negotiated is we're gonna move, we're gonna, uh, get rid of the wall here and and kind of make a, an alcove and push it back. So this will be grayed. It will have protective ballads. And the transformer is gonna be here on the ground. So it actually works out better because you're not gonna be able to see it. It's not gonna be elevated. It won't be high from the street. Um, and the subcommittee seemed happy with that. They certainly can speak for themselves. And the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department is very happy with it. It's gonna give them the access they need for the doors. They're gonna be able to get in to service it or replace it. Um, and it works. So to give you some, and, uh, I think Jim McBane had asked them to do a detail. So that detail is here. And this is really kind of great because, as you know, a lot of projects in the past have like kind of said, here's where the transformer is gonna go. But this is actually definitely where it's gonna go because it's been committed to by them.
I should mention that, that this is a, a good solution because as, as Brian just mentioned, sitting up eight or ten feet would be more visible both from the unit and from the street. So setting this down in this sort of alcove works out great. It also came up basically that during the discussions that the light department would like to meet with the ZBA, basically to talk about their future coordination with the ZBA. So, uh, that will be something that Dave will set up, um, later on just to let you, let you know it's gonna be coming up. So that we, we can avoid issues where transformers become, come at the front door, or at least we understand what the issues are. It might be cause the development to have some issues as well. So this worked out very well. Uh, we solved it within the last meeting, basically came out great. So, um, we're very happy with, uh, the settlement here for this project.
Yeah. And then, uh, Joe Pride had mentioned, you know, what about snow removal? They're just gonna push the snow back here. So that was a concern when it was mentioned to the light department. So what we've done is you can see that we're proposing, uh, SP one signs here. If you go up, uh, it's specked right here. Do not dump snow in transformer area. And obviously, uh, the management company won't do that. Snow's gonna have to, have to, you know, snow events, we're gonna have to remove the snow from the property as is called from the operation and maintenance plan anyways. But but we certainly don't want snow pushed up against the transformer. So we're at least gonna sign it, um, uh, to make sure that they see that. So that, that was, um, one of the, uh, changes on the parking and then the transformer. And then other detail, subcommittee was not happy the way the, the granite curbing had been kind of called out. It was confusing. Um, so now it's really specified, um, as you can see, all arrows to, it, it's gonna be vertical granite curbing uh, on the site. Um, it was kind of vague, uh, the way it was done. So it's even pointed out over here, sidewalks to be replaced, sidewalks to be replaced. Uh, they wanted that very, you can see granite curbing. They wanted that very well specked and that now has been put on there on the plan. So that is a change. They also want a detail on, uh, the fence that's gonna go on the wall. Uh, so now the detail in the fence, which is gonna be a, um, uh, wrought iron, um, uh, faux wrought iron fence, which is pretty standard.
And running around the.
Yeah, on the wall, some of the walls, like this wally area is gonna be high enough to have it. This will need it up in this area, Dave. Coming down, it's gonna need some fencing. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, then. So let's see, and Jim and Amy and Joe, if I'm missing anything, let me know. I'm sure you will. But I think, uh, so this is, I think we're on sheet C three. Is this C three? Let me see. C three, yeah. So, um, there's been a note put on the plan today, uh, one last note from the, um, from the, uh, DPW. So from the plan that you got Friday, this note, I'm circling, was inserted on the plan today. The ejecta pump for the floor drain system should be equipped with a shut off that will turn the pump off in the event that the drainage system is surcharged beyond the rim of the trench, of the trench drain. And the town engineer wanted that to avoid potential flooding of the garage. So we thank him for that.
You also got the crosswalk.
That's coming up, Jim. That's not on the sheet. I think it's coming up next. I was looking for that. Yeah. Okay, so, uh, as you might recall, one of the mitigation items, um, on the project is, uh, to install a crosswalk. We work with the DPW, um, and, uh, initially, the way it was proposed was there was not gonna be a transition curb on the side for handicap. And the subcommittee said that's not gonna work. Uh, we want a transition cap for handicap on both sides. And that was changed. We also worked with the DPW uh, in the subcommittee to locate this crosswalk in a good area, uh, that's gonna work and also not interfere with anyone's driveways or parking spaces on the street or anything like that. So this is, this is the area that was cho- chosen. So you'll have a nice sidewalk going to another sidewalk with handicap accessibility right outside the building, that not only the building will be able to use, but the neighborhood will be able to use.
And it's just a crosswalk. It's not a lighted signal kind of one with those flashing lights. Okay, just, just for clarity. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right. Then we also, um, subcommittee asked us to update the landscaping plan. I gotta shrink this down a little bit. Now I gotta pull it up. So we updated the landscaping plan to take account for the fact of the transformer wall. So that has been done. This is, was revised by a landscape architect.
You gotta get, uh, Peter to update his drawings too, because I went on the plans that you showed. He doesn't, he doesn't show the transformer.
Okay. It shows outside the building, Jim, the old way?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Make a note. Peter, did you hear that? You hear somewhere?
I did. I did hear it.
Great. Okay, and then, uh, these are some details. Uh, there were some details that the subcommittee required. I think they're on the next sheet to be changed. Let me see. Yeah. The wall. So, subcommittee, if you remember, uh, the board talked about that the retaining walls will be poured, they're gonna be concrete and reinforced cement concrete walls. But the, the facing on them is gonna be the veneer face to match the foundation, stone foundation. So that note, I gotta blow it up. Can you see it now?
Yep.
So that note has been put on the detail. And the subcommittee also requested that we put a decorative cap on the wall. So that has been specked in.
Okay.
Uh, and that is it. I just want to point out a couple of notes because we work with the subcommittee and the, uh, and the town engineer, we really kind of fine tuned the language. So the, um, Tarrant Lane, um, we find it a little bit confusing as to, as to, as built plans, um, whether you need them for the building. So so we really clarified that in note fourteen because it didn't seem to include, um, it didn't seem to include the building on the as-built plan. So we, we put the building in there. And as-built has to be provided, uh, prior to certificate of occupancy. We also have to provide an environmental monitor, which the DPW requires. Um, so these are all the notes that the DPW wanted. We worked with Bill Reno to make sure that we had covered what he wanted.
Right. So that was recommended condition of approval. That was on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm seeing, there's a sewer one. Do we cover any of the others? Because there, there's a couple other recommended conditions of approval.
Yeah. So you probably see the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Yeah, we've already submitted that to them, but the, the, the the conditions have that we have to provide a final one to him. That's in the conditions.
Okay, and then the I and IV thing.
Yeah, that's in the decision.
Yep. Yep. Okay. So that covers the stuff in their letter. All right. Great. Thank you.
Brian, where do we cover the trees on the street?
That's in the decision, Jim.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't know what's gonna happen.
You mean the placement out on Crescent?
Well, we are committed to put up the three street trees on Crescent if we can fit them. So that's a, that's a condition in the decision.
Be dealt with later.
Yeah. So that's it on the site plan. Jim or Amy or Joe, did I miss anything?
No, and, and I, I, well, I'll speak for myself. I don't, I believe we're covered at this point after some fifteen meetings. Um, I thank both, uh, your client and yourself and my team basically for, you know, getting this to where it is now, which is very well set within the circumstance we have to work within. Um, so, um, I don't think there's any need for anything further from, um, the subcommittee at this point. And now it's up to the board basically to announce their opinion or at least, um, what further information they might need um, outside of a subcommittee because we've got it to a point basically where I think it's, um, at least the board didn't have to spend fifteen meetings on this. And, uh, so it's down to, uh, you know, the board to sort of comment, make recommendations or whatever, basically at this point. So I'll step off the podium. Let that, let them take it from there along with the public afterwards.
Brian, I did mention to, uh, Jim about maybe putting a fence for the transformer, but Jim didn't think it was necessarily and I, and necessary. And I think someone else brought up that maybe by putting a fence there, that trash would get thrown behind there and just get filled with debris. So.
Oh, in front of the transformer, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was my comment last week about fence. And I, I think someone brought it up that it would just get filled up with trash and people would be throwing stuff back. So and it's, I guess it's far enough from the street anyways. It wouldn't really need a fence per se, especially this past park in front of it anyways.
Yeah.
So, okay. That's all I have.
So I, as you know, Mr. Chair, would you like me to, do you want me to address the decision at all? Or, um, where do you want me to go next? Because you know what I've submitted.
Right. So we, we've got an O and M and a schedule. If anyone had any questions on either of those, um, we could, we could just take those up and then maybe get to the draft decision. I think there's some comments on it. We could try to cover them as um, as quickly. Again, um, I don't want to get into, you know, editorial wordsmithing here, but maybe if there's some substantive questions about some of the language in there, we can perhaps get that clarified tonight and then we can continue to work it offline as we usually do. So do you want to just, any, oh, well, just ask board members, did you have any questions with the construction schedule as proposed? Proposed to run.
Yeah, that was fine tuned. I mean, it's shown about a year and a half for completion. And the decision requires that, you know, once, once this gets going, um, that, uh, we have to have a construction management plan with the building inspector and really fine tune that at that point.
Brian, do you have that available that you can pop up on the screen?
I do.
Public.
Yeah, hold on, Joe. There you go. Oh, let me shrink it down. Can you see the, uh, items?
Yeah.
All right. Any comments, question? Yeah, board members?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian. Um, O and M. Operation of Maintenance. Again, it seems to cover the basis for me. I don't know if anyone noticed anything that, yeah, we got admitted, but it's been worked through the subcommittee as well, right? So.
Yeah, and we went through. Hang on a second. Hang on a second. I have time open this. Spent a lot of time, you know, this is. This, this has really been, you know, a lot of, a lot of O and Ms will be kind of. You know, typical. Um. But we, we spent, spent a lot of time on this, really crafting it to this. To this building because, because there's been commitments made to this. Uh, building to the board with, um, access systems for the garage. Um, door system access, security cameras. Um, and, um, so we've really, you know, really addressed that in here. On, on upkeep. So, a lot of the stuff is just maintenance of the building envelope, which is pretty, pretty standard. Um, I can go into some of the specifics if you want.
This really one that we, we, yeah, we want to make sure it covers those systems and we.
Yeah, so this just orients the building and basically says that the owner or management company has to have as-built plans. How they have to have familiar, they have to have contact information with the vendors. Um, this talks about the building exteriors, which are the envelope, foundation, walls, roof lines, roof system, membrane. Siding, trim details, windows, walls and fencing. And basically, um, any necessary pliers replacements to the above list should be made. To always keep them in good operating and aesthetic condition, have to keep a record of inspections. Uh, the retaining walls, I put a note in here, with a stone veneer and fencing should be maintained and replaced as needed. Subcommittee was concerned that maybe if that stone veneer fell off the wall, that, you know, it has to be maintained and put back in place. Uh, can't just be left in a, a bad state. Um, you know, basically drains have to be cleaned and then building systems deal with the HVAC, the fire system, which a lot of that is fire code anyways. Water meters, electrical system, emergency lighting, common area carbon monoxide detectors, dryer vents. An elevator. HVAC has to be replaced semiannually, clothes dryer exhaust need to be cleaned twice a year. Um, uh, renewal dates of the fire extinguishers, elevators have to be kept intact, inspections with the fire department is required. And again, just a blanket statement that any necessary pierce replacements to the above list to compose should be. Made to always keep them in good operating and aesthetic condition, have to keep a record of the inspections. The building interiors deal with the steel wall lighting, thermostats, pest control. Uh, hallways, mechanical rooms, trash and recycle, package delivery room, main entry door system, parking garage and garage doors and security. Uh, regular inspections of these, uh, basically light bulbs, et cetera, need to be maintained. Um, and, uh, doors need to be adjusted to always be working. Pest control by an outside contractor will be conducted, maintain the property in a safe, sanitary and pest-free condition. So they need to keep records on the pest control, who that is. Hallways and stairways should be kept free and clear, personal property and debris, no storage shall take place in those areas. Mechanical rooms should be kept clean and free of any personal property and debris, no storage shall take place therein. The trash and recycle storage will be inside the building with no trash recycling items outside of the building whatsoever. Except for the day that they will be collecting removed from the property by the trash into a recycle contractor. So nothing stick, you know, no stacking trash out the driveway or anything like that. The package delivery room should be locked at all times and the owner or qualified property management company should make sure that people making deliveries to property have immediate access. To the package delivery room upon arrival at the property. Um, the main lobby entrance and package delivery rooms have connected access portal touchscreens with video that will link directly with all units for visitors. And management for deliveries to allow access to the building. These shall always be kept in good working order. Uh, the parking garage level that enters from Crescent Hill should be restricted to vehicles of residents of the building only. Uh, and then this, this is a condition in the decision and on the plan, but it restates it again in the, in the O and M. Ten of the parking spaces in the parking garage that enters from Crescent Street, which are designated for visitor parking, should only be used for visitor parking. Uh, the garage doors, that's important because for the people to get in, they need to, visitors again, they need to be working garage doors should be inspected, fixed, adjusted. As needed on a yearly basis, which will always, uh, should be, uh, always kept in good working order. Um, we thought, uh, this was important. The striping of the parking spaces, directional demarcations and the labeling of the visitor parking spaces in the garage should be maintained. And redone as needed so that they always remain clearly visible. Um, the garage access for residents is going to be via a lift master type radio frequency identification device. To be provided to all the residents for their vehicles. This shall always be kept in good working order.
Brian, yeah. Sorry, I was trying to come up with you two up the garage door.
Hold on Greg, let me get there.
I think it was two up. Uh, the garage door shall be inspected. And fixed as needed on a yearly basis. Do you mean inspected on a yearly basis and fixed and adjusted as needed?
We can clarify that.
As needed on a yearly basis, doesn't seem to make sense.
I hear you. Uh, so. Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of contradictory.
Yeah, they probably inspected at least annually and adjusted and fixed up as needed.
Let me get there, Greg, let me see.
Go down.
Okay, the garage doors shall be inspected on a yearly basis? Is that what you want?
I think so.
Okay, so let's just. Nearly basis. Okay, and then we can say, and also. Fixed and adjusted as needed, right? And get rid of that. And she'll always be kept a good worker. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so then, uh, surveillance, the common areas, exterior of the building, including the parking garages. Shall be equipped with a camera surveillance system that shall always be kept in good working order and shall always be operational. So not just there, but it's going to be operating. Um. And then again, any necessary peers, the replacements to your above list to compose should be made to always keep them good operating aesthetic condition and keep a record of inspections. Uh, then the walkways, driveways, loading and parking area and signage. Um, again, regular inspections. And this basically says that the property is going to be walked for any excess debris, garbage, leaves. Um. The site walkways, driveways, loading and parking areas, including front entrances and driveway entrance, the garage, these areas should be maintained and repaired on a regular basis. Any signage on the building, uh, any signage, including but not limited to directional signage, shall be maintained and replaced on a regular basis. This is the gas and oil separator. We have to meet MWRA requirements. And again, any necessary, uh, repairs. So then we get into the grounds, which I think is, is important to, um, the neighbors and we talk about pet sanitation. Um, landscaping irrigation and snow removal. So this first talks about graffiti, any graffiti, uh, will be removed. And the building numbers and signs are going to be maintained, light fixtures. Uh, in place and working properly, including replacement of damage or burnt out light bulbs is required. Uh, any pet waste will be disposed of in the proper, in the, in the proper manner daily. Um, landscaping features, so you've seen this before. This is an extensive landscaping management plan. Um, which has been in other decisions and basically it's, it just goes through every season on what's going to happen. And there is provision in here that if anything dies on the landscaping plan, it has to be replaced. In, in irrigation, um, has to be included. I mean, I'm not going to go through this because it deals with spring cleanup, it deals with winter protection, it deals with fall cleanup. Um, the mulching and fertilization. And then we get to the snow and ice removal. Um, seasonal snow and ice removal in the property shall continually ensure that all the snow and ice falling or forming within the property. Will be removed from any pedestrian vehicle, emergency operate, emergency operational loading and parking years as soon as possible during all weather events. That necessitates such removal. Based on the formation of ice by sleet or freezing rain. On exterior surfaces which can adversely impact walking, driving, loading or parking activities and the safety of residents and visitors. Snow accumulation shall be removed from the property as necessary to maintain driveways, walkways, loading areas. Loading area and exterior parking spaces free of snow and ice accumulation. So there's no, any of those visitor spaces, loading area, no piling of snow. So, we've talked about this, my clients understand that, you know, virtually any type of storm that's going to have. You know, maybe over an inch, they're going to have to remove the snow and keep those areas free. One of the things that they're. They would, they are considering is, and they're looking into it, they might actually heat the driveway. Um, that's an option. So it would just not even require to be plowed, but. There's some limitations on that because they don't have gas at this building, as you know, so. But that, that might be one option, and that would satisfy this requirement because they will be free of snow and ice if it was heated. Um. And it talks about clearing all the entry ways, loading areas, parking spaces, no slush of ice. Uh, and again, not in those, uh, no snow or ice should be placed in the loading area, parking spaces, that area where the transformer is located. Spreading of calcium chloride. Um, exterior doors must be operational exits unimpeded, downstairs posted applicable to be cleared of ice and snow accumulation. Um, and, um, talks about the contractor having to come back more than once, more than likely, so. And then G is an appendix A, which I, I didn't have, but now I do, and that's the, um, O and M plan for the drainage system. Which. Uh, has been approved by the town engineering department. Um, I'm not going to bring, I've got that, Mr. Chair, I can send it to you. I don't think, you know. It's going to bore you if I bring it up. It's been approved by Bill Reno. Is it okay if I don't do that?
Okay, unless board members want to see it, or if you send it electronically, it'll be routed and everyone can see it.
I can just show you quick.
Oh, no, you said you wouldn't.
Yeah, well, I mean, just the detail, I mean, I'll just, I'll just. So there it is, it's the appendix A. And it just deals with all of the. You know, this is for the, um. For the, oh, for the, um. For the, um, drainage system. So.
So you'll send that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And we need an updated, uh, which plan? Do we need updated?
You need a new plan too, yeah.
Uh, which one? The, um, architectural, because we're going to know, make sure it accounts for the, um. The transformer. And there was something else that you said was just made today, a change, was that on?
Yeah, you're gonna, I'm gonna, you're gonna get new site civil set. One change on C three was done, but I had to make a change on everything to keep it consistent.
Okay, so we have new those plans.
Yeah.
Minor changes from tonight and the drainage, oh, and, okay, noting what we can look for.
Hmm.
Brian.
Hmm.
Um. The, um, construction communication with the neighborhood. I didn't hear you talk about that.
Yeah, I think we had that in the decision, Jim.
Okay.
Yeah. Make a note of that. So do you want the decision, Dave?
Yeah, I'm, in the interest of time and, and, you know, there's a lot of detail that I don't think we want to go through everything, but. I, I would say if you have a copy and you want to bring it up, and if board members have any specific comments they want. To ensure get clarified, maybe we just look at those specific areas. Again, um. There's already quite a bit of work that went into it. It'll be sort of, you know, finalized and. We'll get all the final dates and plan, you know, noted and. Obviously, there's a little more work to do on it, but. So, board members, did you have any specific comments you want to bring out at this time? Make sure if there's questions or clarifications.
Yeah, the only questions, substantive question I have is on the signage. Um, I can't remember if it's a condition or finding, I think it was a condition. It says, it, it seems too limiting. I think we need, I, I needed a little clarification on it. It seems to say.
It's, it's, it's in two spots, Greg, so.
Yeah, and it says pretty much the same thing, right?
Yeah, it does, and, and, you know. And again, you know, that was, I kind of went off Tarrant Lane. I thought some of this, I thought some of the stuff in decisions redundant, it says it a couple of times, but I just left it alone, so.
But, so I guess we. Are saying, or that is saying, we retain jurisdiction, but then it says, as it relates specifically to directional signage. We retain the right to acquire additional signage. I mean, we kind of retain the right to. Approve a sign package as a whole, so that seems to be a limiting factor right there that says we can only. We're only retaining the right on directional signage. Is that? Is that what we're saying?
Not what you intended.
No, I, 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 I mean. The, the reason I did that was that. There's already some directional signage on the plan. Like the arrow coming out of the garage on, on, um. On the garage that goes out, you know, left-hand turn only.
Yeah.
There, there are some directional signs on that site plan, so that's why I said additional directional signage is maybe required by the board. Um. But it is kind of redundant because it says this includes any signs identified premises, uh, in, in addition, okay, so. Let's just, the prior completion of the project, the applicant shall submit the final design for the project signage for the board review. Um, it probably should say into approval, right?
Yeah, so I, I have other comments that, like that, that we can probably do offline.
Okay.
Later, but I think this is the only. I, I just couldn't quite understand it, uh, if you were trying to say, I mean, I think you could probably just take out the entire. As it relates to specific, specifically the directional signage sentence.
I think you're probably right.
As long as the directional is included in that first part, and that's where we get the whole sign package, Greg.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so that, to, to me, that, that sentence that I think we should delete is. Let me just keep deleting that whole second. Set, the, the last sentence there, because to me it seems limiting. It's saying. Yeah, we get a package, but we only retain the right to require additional directional signage.
Yeah. That seems fair. It simplifies.
Yeah, delete that entire. Tire, keep going, delete the rest of that from the board retains the right.
Right here?
Yep.
Because we're going to get a sign package.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll figure it out at that time if.
Yep.
We need to do something different with the direction we're signing, yeah. As well as anything else, yeah.
Okay.
And, and like I said, I have other stuff, but I don't think it's, it's.
I'm just going to go down to the condition on signage, because I, and I had a couple of typos in here that I fixed. That Dave, that I'll send you revised.
Sure.
Was nothing substantive, it was just kind of typos. Um. But I'm going to go down to the conditions, because I think Greg does a condition on.
Yeah, yeah, it says it twice.
Yeah. So I'm just going to highlight it, so I, I remember. Here we go. I'll just highlight it, so we don't forget it. Okay. Okay.
Alright, anything else, Greg? Did, I know you had some comments, that's.
I, I don't think anything for, for. I'm just scrolling through my copy that I put, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I think there's some things you, you noted that could be clarified. Well, let's see.
Yeah.
So go ahead. I, I was going to back you up to the, to the approved plans, because I think it's worth clarifying.
Okay, okay, no, I can do that. Uh, let me go up there.
Item nine, item nine at the top where you list all the approved plans, Brian.
Okay.
Yeah, so a couple on that.
Let me make some notes. I, I'd like to get your comments so we can. Okay, go ahead, Greg, right here.
Uh, no, keep going up to the list of approved plans.
Yeah.
Oh, where it's defined. Uh, keep going.
Got it.
Yeah, so I think it starts with. Um, so this is, we're calling it the approved plan, so I guess, I, and I know this is based on Tarrant Lane, but I think this is, you know. Some of the comments are us getting experience with forty Bs too. So first off, the traffic impact assessment, is that really what we would consider an approved plan? So I think that should probably come out.
I agree, I, I, I struggle with this. I, I, I agree a hundred percent, because I, I thought the same thing. I just left it because it was there before that.
Yeah, yeah, I think some of this is us learning, so.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe it's not a plan, but, you know, we have typically listed when we get. Stormwater management plans, traffic assessment, you know, financial fiscal assessments. They're part of the evidence that we considered as part of.
Yeah, but that should be in a totally different section, because approved plans runs throughout the, the defined term runs throughout the document.
I think the approved plans, Greg, should really be these, the engineering plans, the architectural plans and the landscape plan.
Yeah, anything about the report.
I think the O and M should be in there.
Yeah.
I think the construction scheduling should be in there. Stormwater, I, I guess I'm not technical enough, you can.
There's more of a report.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. Okay. Uh, the list of final waivers shouldn't be in there, because there.
Yeah, and honestly, there is no list of final waivers. They're in this document. It's not an attachment.
Yeah.
So maybe there's another section, because I don't know if it belongs in ten under testimony, but maybe there's another one that's other. Other reports, you know, received or presented, um, as part of this application or something.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe up here where it says submission of supplemental throughout the public hearing, the applicant and, and others submitted additional information and include that there.
Including, yeah, could be there, yeah, I understand.
And I think public letters should be, if anything was sent to the board, should be listed there too.
We have them. Yep.
I think they should be listed. Oh, you have a message, you can do it. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, gotcha.
Well, we've got a lot of emails and, and handwritten notes and stuff. I don't, we typically don't list all of them in a, a decision.
We do in the forty Bs we have in the past.
We have, okay. We have, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have also in the past, basically, listed the reports under reports, uh, letters from the, letters from the fire department, the, you know, whatever, basically, so they're separate elements, basically, as you point out.
And the letters from the fire department and, and things like that are in here already.
Yeah, they're already in there, yeah. What are, what are those, Dave, under ten? Well, maybe that's where some of this.
Yeah, I think you just make a B and a C.
Yeah. Yeah, I can figure that out with, with the chair.
Okay, but I, I thought that was a worthwhile point to bring up, Greg.
I, 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 I do too, I, 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 when I did that, it, it, it kind of didn't seem right to me, but I just kind of followed that template, so I, I agree.
Okay. And I think that covers, oh, under eleven, you asked about peer review, so.
Yeah, I, and the only reason I put it there is because there wasn't, in other forty B decisions who have also had a paragraph that talks about, you know, because we are basically saying, all this testimony was introduced, we're saying, you know, we, there's a peer review, and I think it was in Terren Lane also, if I remember right, but, um, you know, we had VHB peer review, um.
Well, they, they called VHB the peer reviewer now, which really isn't the case, because VHB is part of the Wakefield Traffic Advisory Committee.
Yeah, but it is an outside consultant, so I mean, but yeah, I mean.
So I kind of covered them, because, because right here, the, these are the memorandums that were sent by VHB.
Yep. Right, either way, I just thought of something, and I, that might be it, Dave, I think, I mean.
I mean, unless, unless you want to reference Ezra, who you used through the process.
Yeah, that's probably worthwhile.
Yep. I'm just making notes, I don't forget, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, Ezra, maybe through subcommittee hearings, including, you know, participation by MAC, you know, whatever it is, title is, right, yep.
Okay.
I guess, Dave, more so because this is just, uh, maybe something for, for you as chair even, under the annual monitoring. Um, what page is this, page ten?
Page ten, Greg?
Yep, page ten, it's the number two on there, where the applicant shall submit to the board an annual certification report. Are we the right people to really receive that, should that really be like, uh, Erin Kokinda's department there, I think that's what we've done in the, in the past also, the people actually track our numbers and compliance and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And, and Dave, I don't know if you have other.
Yeah, no, no.
That just, it doesn't seem like something we should be doing.
No, it's, it's, again, historically, I think the town planner, and then he would keep us informed. But now, without a town planner, I think Erin, Erin is closest to that role, and what she's doing is part of her job, so yeah.
I think that's probably it.
Okay. Yeah, and we can, we can work on, I've got a copy of Greg's comments, Brian, and some of them are just, you know, editorial and just cleaning up wording, and we can cover that when we continue to work on that.
Okay.
That's all out, but, uh, no, that was good, all right, right, thank you. Anyone else, board members, and any substantive sort of questions or clarifications? You want to bring out here? Okay. All right, well, again, we're gonna continue to review it, and so if something does come up, you know, just send Brian and I a note. And we'll make sure we account for it or clarify, uh, respond accordingly. Okay. Um, all right, what else, Brian, I think, was that everything we were? All the new material?
That was everything that we sent.
All right.
Next step, we're, we're, we're actually, you know, we're looking to really bring this to a close, that, uh, that, uh, we think we've put a lot of time and effort into this, and um, so, you know, I guess I'll ask you, Mr. Chair, where do we go from here, in, in an effort to get this closed out?
So, um, again, we've extended the public hearing till the end of the month, no, do we went into March, did we?
March eleventh.
Right. So. So I think I'm inclined to keep that open, obviously, continue to work with you offline on, on the details of the decision. And we can bring it back for any discussion, if we think we need more board input at the next hearing, right? But potentially, we could, um, you know, board members, open to you as well. Again, if, if everyone's comfortable that we've vetted everything at this point, I'm not necessarily looking to take a vote tonight, um, and, and close the public hearing, but maybe continue to work on the, on the decision, and if there's any questions or we need clarification, then the public hearing still ultimately come back to a full board and try to get those clarified in the next X hearing, or the one after that, if needed, but because I think that's where we are, it's finalized the decision, make the updates that we talked about tonight on the O and M, and get those final plans. And maybe come back in two weeks and see where we are. Sound good?
Yeah, do you think there's a chance, you know, if we work on this, we can get it closed out at the next meeting, said, you think that, does a board?
Actually, we can carve out the time to to get the details worked out, get the plans updated.
Great.
Well, we can send it around, uh, for final review. I think even Ezra sent, sent us a, a note and said he'd be happy to review it too. Uh, so maybe once we have an, an updated cleaner decision, we can route it, uh, through him, he said he'd be happy to give us his thoughts. Uh, you know, from his perspective, having been involved, uh, for the time he was here, so. Sound good, board members, any other?
Um, I just have a, a question, so are we thinking of the twenty-third to bring this back, Brian?
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, I, Dave, I think I can clean, you know, I don't think there's a lot of cleanup here, I think I can get it to you by the end of the week or over the weekend, um, and then you can run with it. Captain, you know, our goal would be to, to have it back here the twenty-third for a vote and approval and close it out, that's our goal, that's our goal. Um, you know, hopefully, we can do that, and I, and we appreciate the cooperation of the board.
The only thing I'm thinking is, what, what's the date we have extended it to, March eleventh?
That's for the public hearing part, yes.
Yeah, okay, I'm just thinking, because I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-third, and I think as of right now, I'm a voting member on this, so.
I won't be here either.
I won't be here either.
Is there a party on the twenty-third, I don't know.
Full vacation week.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to push it to March ninth, and then, but then also extend that um, date to make the decision. Unless we have enough people to vote without me and Joe there, I don't know.
Well, you're gonna, if Dave's, you're gonna have Dave, Mr. McBane, Mr. Todd Bell will be back. Uh, Greg's available. So that's.
Greg, are you here on the twenty-third?
Yeah, my kids aren't in school yet, so I don't go away then.
No, I just, you know, Amy, you put a lot of work into this.
And then, uh, is Tom, is Tom back on yet, uh, Mr. Chair?
Um, he would have to catch up on tonight, because he's just.
So, so if he's, if he's around, I mean, you will have five members on the, so, you know, why don't we, why don't we continue until the twenty-third? Amy, would you be offended, would you be okay if we, if you weren't here, I mean, I don't want to shun anybody.
No, I mean, I don't, I would never want to hold up somebody's project, I just want to make sure that we have enough voting members that, um, you know, that we didn't do all this work in vain.
Yeah, so I think we, I think potentially we have five, we have the chair, Mr. McBane, Mr. Top Bell will be back, uh, Mr. McIntosh and Mr. Lucy.
Yep, as long as Jim and, I mean, Chip and Tom catch up on tonight's hearing, sign their affidavits, then yeah, they'd be back on, and you'd have five, I just, I feel bad for you, Amy, you know, if we did proceed, you put a lot of work into blood, sweat, and tears into this, all the subcommittee work, and then you don't get to vote on it. So I would, it's up to you.
I could always zoom in, if it's, I mean, if it's gonna be a first one, and it's just kind of tightening up everything, I might be able to zoom in from the beach.
Or you could skip vacation.
Yeah, yeah, that's not happening. I love you all, but no.
I go for the beach.
Yeah.
Why don't we continue to twenty-third, and we'll see where we are at that point, if we have voting members.
Okay.
Ready to proceed.
If I'm able to zoom in, I will, yeah.
But if, if we're still, there's something outstanding or some questions, then we can then take up the matter of extending the public hearing and then finishing it off March ninth, if there is. But, uh, potentially, it could be, it could be completed at the next hearing, Brian, to your point. We're all caught up, we got the decision updated and the rest of this stuff finalized, so. All right, so with that, um, we have seen a lot of new testimony tonight, so I will open it up, this money at this time, just move things along. Um, so if you do have a comment or question, member of the public, please raise your hand in the Zoom call, and I will call anyone order at this time. No hand waving or yellow hands in the Zoom window, uh, we will close it to public testimony for the evening. So back to the board, we need a motion to continue to February twenty-third.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh, continue this to our next meeting, February twenty-third.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And F O S. Okay, so we'll see you on the twenty-third, Brian, we'll be in touch.
Now and then, I will too, yeah, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair, for members.
Thank you.
I think I stapled the agenda with some plans, so I'll go to my online version. So our next continued hearing, twenty-one dash fifty, fifty-one and fifty-two CCF Guanapowat Property Company LLC at two hundred to four hundred Guanapowat Parkway.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrill for the applicant. Um, the usual suspects are with me tonight, that's got, uh, Matt D'Amico from CCF, and, um, also presenting tonight, uh, is going to be, uh, Ian Ramey, um, from Copley Wolf, and, uh, also, um, Steph Deall from, um, Cube Three on the architectural aspects, and what we, what we, the way we left it off at the last meeting, and what, uh, those, um, consultants will be touching on tonight, um, is kind of getting into some more detail on the amenities for the pro, uh, project that, um, the board had, um, uh, requested to have some detail on, um, on these plans tonight, you're gonna see, uh, the public safety area, which is a commitment that this project made uh, to the town of Wakefield early on, and we want you to know we haven't, uh, forgotten that, uh, we also made a commitment to public restrooms, um, which was a, a, that goes back to an early stage that we talked about, that uh, when people are walking the lake, that's often a problem around town, that they don't have a place to use a bathroom if they have kids, or and so there is going to be public restrooms for people utilizing the lake in the paths, uh, and you'll see those on the amenity spaces for the public. And, um, uh, also, we've had an opportunity, um, Steph has had an opportunity to look at the one twenty-eight side of the building. Uh, Mr. McBane had, had pointed out, uh, some deficiencies in that area, so we've had an opportunity to, to do a little bit of work on that, want to give you a status on that, show you some ideas that we have to make sure that we're heading in the right direction to address that request of the board. Um, we are also gonna talk about some lighting, uh, and some more landscaping detail uh, that the board have requested to see, so with that said, um, Ian and Steph, who's gonna go first?
Uh, I'm up.
Okay, you're up, Steph.
Thanks, Brian, uh, good evening, I'm Steph Deall, um, I'll be presenting on behalf of Cube Three, I also have John Harding here with me from Cube Three as well, he'll be chiming in. Um, so this presentation tonight will be primarily based on the feedback, um, as Brian said, that we heard from the last CBA meeting, and how we're being responsive to those comments, so the elevation of the building against Route one twenty-eight, it wasn't as the same character as the lakeside elevation, so we'll be walking through a revised, more thoughtful approach to that highway elevation. Uh, secondly, we will go into more details on specific amenity locations, program elements, and how they intersect with daily life for the residents of two hundred Guanapowat. Um, and Ian will be going through this in more detail later on, but the detailed landscape materials and sight lighting approach and photometric plans. Um, so right now, we are looking at the building against the highway and how we looked at this elevation, two levels of development, so those strategies are, one, to break the facade into three separate facade treatments, so the scale works at a high speed and breaks up the building. Um, that's what you see highlighted in red here, and then we looked at these three sections and further articulated the facade treatments to ensure that those residential elements are clean and sections become unique to its location against the highway. Um, I'm bringing up a view already seen, this is the rendered view, um, of building three in the front, uh, with that lakeside. Um, so we put a lot of thought into that lakeside architecture, and we wanted to pull some of that articulation and thoughtfulness to the highway side of the building and wrap that language to that elevation. Um, in particular, the character and rhythm of the protruding bays, um, and the material changes that respond well to the surrounding site. Um, so now, these next slides are the actual elevation against the highway, this is the elevation A, as you can see, um, in the key, in red up at the top. This is the north section. Um, clearly, we're taking the cues from the front of the building that I just showed you to break down the scale with variation of materials and depth along the facade. We have those clear structure bays that relate to the unit scale and size internally, and is visible in the roof line of materials, which continues that vertical rhythm. Um, we're creating changes in the building plane at these bays to create visible, um, texture and shadow lines, and then we're also adding those residential elements such as the Juliet balconies and larger glazing areas. This is moving on to elevation B, um, this is the central section of the, where the garage is, that breaks up the two facades. Um, we're making sure to provide a strong vegetated buffer against that garage edge as well as introducing some strong vertical elements that relate to the building character and provide screening and interest to the garage edge and residential entry. So the screening is meant to echo the trees and scale along this roadway. Now we're looking at elevation C, which is the southern portion of the facade where the building starts to, the building edge starts to peel away from the highway, allowing for more room and privacy um, between building and highway, so this gave us the opportunity to become a little more playful and the opportunity to change the expression of the building without compromising the residential experience, so we added fold-up balconies here and began to push and pull a little more, um, to closely echo that lakeside facade that we showed previously. Um, these next slides, we're gonna go over those amenities that Brian talked about, um, this is the proposed site plan that you guys have seen before. Last meeting, there was a consensus to understand some more of the programmatic elements of that community base amenity within the three buildings here circled in the red.
Hey, Steph, can you hang on one sec?
Yep.
This is Brian, Mr. Chair, do we want to talk about the, what we've done on the highway? To not confuse these, or do you want us to keep going?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me.
Can, can we go back to the first slide, which showed the interior courtyard area?
The plan view?
Uh, no, the L, the rendering.
Next one, Steph, I think.
Oh, sorry.
It seemed, I mean, it made progress on a texture and um, a little more movement in the facade, basically, but this seems like it has a little more playfulness than what happens on the highway side. Um, and I'm not sure what that, where that's in this, in the two, basically, you have taken some of the elements. down in that midsection and moved at the other side, but it doesn't seem quite as playful in the architecture as it does on the inner court area. And I'm wondering, I'm not sure what it is without studying it further or looking at it further, but there's something different about how it's treated. And I, I think you need to go back a little bit and see what you can do to to, to that highway side to give it a little more life than what, what's proposed right now.
Okay.
Do you want to see those elevations on the highway, Jim?
Yeah, we can go back to those. See, it's, 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 it's somehow flat. Now, whether that means that there's got to be more projections or, or some of those design elements basically set into this. And, and are these intended to be white? And what material?
Yeah, we wanted to mimic the exact materials of the other side. So it'd be like a white metal panel with the wood paneling.
Yep.
And this, the elevation A, it's not as playful just because it's so close to the highway. We didn't it's more of like the urban edge of, of the elevation, but I'm sure there's other things we can look into.
And I don't know, you know, like, like in this one here where the, where the far side on the far left is just, you know, it's a mimic of what you showed last week. It's, it's, you know, it doesn't help as it turns the corner or anything like that. And I'm, I don't know whether it's some more projections, not in the way the white area is, but maybe it's some elements within the brickwork that have some texture to them or something like that. It's just, it just seems like it's, it's gone partway, but it hasn't gone far enough to really give it some playfulness. And I understand the, I understand that it's sitting, you know, practically on top of the highway. And so there are, there are elements here that like you not necessarily open your door in the middle of the day because it's probably pretty noisy, particularly at eight o'clock in the morning. But it, it, it needs a little more playfulness or jazz or whatever, basically, which the inside has in this doesn't. It could be just the color of the, the color of the rendering and the brick compared with the other side. Or I, I'm, I'm not sure what it is. It just, it's not there yet.
We, we can look to advance that richness in the final elevations and before, before any board move.
That would be good.
Anyone else? On these elevations? All right. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. So now I'll get into the amenities.
Steph, you want to step, step back to the the last rendering just before this? Noticed one thing in this thing, in this rendering. See how the, in the middle where it says large windows? The white continues through in several areas. And I, I don't know whether that would help, basically running that band through some of the brick areas to break it up a little bit more, but take a hint from it, I guess.
Yeah, no, that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what amenities?
Amenities. All right. So yeah. I just wanted to bring out this proposed site plan to reorient us just a tad. We have that entry to the site from Guanapowhat Parkway on the west side of the plan with the public restaurant with parking and the public restrooms. And then we introduced that activated path in addition to that original path along the lakeside. And then we touched on the fact that as a resident, we will be providing those onsite amenities in the center of the site, again, highlighted in red in the middle. So as a resident, this village center, as we're calling it, will have those onsite amenities. So you don't necessarily have to leave to go get a cup of coffee or toothbrush and whatnot. These convenient amenities will be onsite for the residents. So this is a high level look and a closer look at those residential amenities in the center of the project. Where these programs would start to fall within each building to create that village feel. So where you would go to get that coffee while waiting for your shuttle, for example, or enjoying lunch overlooking the water. All three of these spaces will have the residential services such as package facilities, mail, dry cleaning, drop off and pickup. And then they will have some specific programs such as the twenty four seven fitness in building three with connection to the main residential courtyard that Ian will probably go into more detail later in the presentation. Leasing and more staffed location will be in building one as well as a flexible workspace. And then in building two, a more recreational amenity such as bike repair. While these areas face a more like semi-public plaza. The next slide we're looking at, this is a deeper look into the building three amenity. Again, we have that twenty four seven fitness where residents can go work out at all times of the day. Allocating enough space for yoga studios and private fitness rooms. Again, every building will have that allocated resident services. This includes the tide lockers for pickup, drop off, dry cleaning, dedicated package rooms and cold lock, lockers for grocery delivery and whatnot. This space will also have that co-working space adjacent to the courtyard. And these grab and go alchemistas, and of course, the shuttle stop. And this is a closer look at the building one amenity. Again, resident services and those grab and go alchemistas. These grab and go vending machines are equipped with like food, coffee and convenience items that the community can program with essentially what goes into those. The bottom left image is the alchemista provided from a completed project at St. Gabriel's recently, actually. So if you needed a phone charger, for example, you can grab one from here and not have to run out to the town center. This area will also have that business center with flexible workspace and coffee station. There's obviously this desire to work from home now. So the space provides that multifunctional workspace. Like for instance, providing a meeting space for onsite meetings. And so now we're on to the building two, a closer look at these amenities again. We'll have the resident services that each building will have and then a more focused recreational area as a place to store and repair bikes as well as bike rentals for the residents. So that wraps up amenities. But again, just to reiterate, these spaces are to create a type of like village center that makes it more convenient for everyday living for the residents of two hundred Guanapowhat. So yeah, if you don't have any questions, I'll give it to Ian.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so one of the things that we had talked early on with the police chief, the fixed station on the bikes that they would have access to that because as you know, they have bike patrols in the, in the good weather season. So they're going to have the they have little station there anyways, but if an officer needs to stop in and fix a flat or work on their bike, they'll have access to that.
Good call.
Is this only for the residents, right? Something like, something like the outdoor fixed station would be available, we would make that available to the public. Yeah. But I think what we were trying to address here is you know, there's going to be certain amenities so that we don't have a vehicular centered project where if there's something, for instance, it's actually something I want to talk about a little bit here, but the there was made reference to, for instance, the alchemista machines, which is something that is an emerging technology that we've been seeing a lot more and implementing into our projects. Where essentially the project can have this continuous service where to the level of like fresh sandwiches you can get in these machines. And it provides a level of amenity onsite so that you're not required to get in the car anytime there's something that comes up. And which is really what we're trying to demonstrate here.
So these renters all have like a special key fob or something like that to get these rooms technically, right? So, so people off the street won't be coming in.
Yeah, so these amenity areas would be secured, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We might want to give the public access to some of the bike repair if it's outside and stuff like that.
That's right.
Yeah, you mentioned that, yeah.
Anything else on the amenities, board members?
Yeah, David, it's Greg. Two thoughts is, I, I I don't want to speak for a chip, but if he was going in the same direction as I was, he and I were talking about amenities. I I think at least one of those areas where we were talking about more amenities and I was hoping there would be more access to the public and not in an intrusive way to the residents. Obviously, this is a residential project. You know, there is going to be the vast majority of the space dedicated to them, but you know, I think I think it was too different of the amenity spaces here had those just machines in them. I think I was hoping to more see, even if it was just a a, a corner coffee shop where if you're walking around, you know, if you got, you're going to have a restaurant, which will you know, if it is a true restaurant likely be open later in the day. If you're walking around in the morning around the lake, maybe grab a coffee, even if you don't live there and not from a machine. That's what I was hoping to see in here. And then my other thought is, so the, if you go, go back to where it showed the public restrooms, or actually, I don't even know if you need to go back, but essentially those are the way it's listed here, those are the restaurants bathrooms that the restaurant will essentially be mandated to let the public into use. It's not any separate facility.
I, I can refine on that a little bit if that is helpful. I, I think our intention there was really to just cluster that as a kind of a more public area and not necessarily to combine that with the restaurants, restrooms, because
Okay, and like, yeah, almost like a lobby.
Have that be something that's, that's separate.
I got you. Okay, okay, that makes sense. So almost like it would be an entry lobby or something and you know, restrooms to one side, but keep going over there. Okay.
And, and one other, I guess, two other things I'd just like to comment on as well in response. A, a, as for the restaurant, I can tell you the type of operator that we've already started to look for is something that would have appeal during most hours of the day. There's, you know, there's some models out there that are emerging of kind of, you know, breakfast, lunch and dinner where they operate as a, as a cafe in the morning. But you could also go there at night and get a cocktail and, you know, enjoy yourself. There's, I, I, I can't tell you, we've been talking to any of these specific operators, but there's models such as Jao is a company that, that operates a number operations like this. There's a bunch of different models like this. And I, I think I can tell you in terms of what I would like to program for this project is something of that type.
One of the things that Chip also brought up was had to do with deliveries and trash. So I don't know whether you've studied how you will handle that with the restaurant. But it, or you're ready to discuss it, but I think we should, you should in the future, at least fairly soon, discuss that as well.
Yep. We, we've started to look into that. We have trash allocated on our on our civil engineering plans. But we will also be incorporating, you know, contemplated delivery areas for the restaurant as well as, you know, package delivery areas for the project itself.
I don't, who was circling that? Is that supposed to be a dumpster or something out in that parking area? In the left?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we were in the civil plans right now. The trash is located over here.
Just to finish my thought that real quick, I, I, I understand what you're saying with the three, you know, three time a day concept, but I don't know. I would like a little bit more info on that or thought than rather, this is what we're looking into now. You know, and then we this gets approved with essentially machines and what we're going to be amenities. And then there isn't that. Well, you know, different concept restaurant that we're hoping for. So instead of just a, you know, this is what we're, I would like there. I, I think I would like a lot more information on that. And if not, and if, if there could be a commitment to even have, even if it's, I know places I've lived have had like, almost like a cubby where or, you know, locker closet where they've turned into a sort of barista that has been open to the public. But you know, that was mostly not in warmer weather climates where it was easier to do that sort of outside, but you know, that's, that's more of what I was hoping.
Point taken. I think, I think we can work, work that out and work to accommodate that.
Thank you. That's a day.
All right. Thanks, Greg. Good comments. Anyone else, board members, before we proceed? Okay.
Great. So good evening again, Ian Ramey with Copley Wolf. I'm going to walk through the landscape materials and then talk about some of the site lighting. So when we did our last presentation, we walked through the various courtyards and kind of focused more on the character and the program, programming of each courtyard. And heard from you that you wanted more specifics about what materials go where and sort of how that works. So we formatted this presentation basically following those courtyards again, but just sort of dialing into what the materials are with callouts. So Steph, if you go, could go to the next slide. So starting with the flex courtyard, we can move through these pretty quickly, but the central component of that courtyard is a, a elevated deck structure. Again, we have that rain garden below. We're thinking that that surface is an alternative to wood, which would be a composite deck material. In the central part of that deck area, we are showing a pergola or shade structure that'll be likely metal and wood components. Around the perimeter of that courtyard will have a native grass buffer that separates the unit patios. Those unit patios will be made out of concrete. The lighting for the courtyard will be along the edges of the deck structure will be a low LED Ballard fixture. And then out towards the neighborhood street will have a taller, but still pedestrian scale LED street light. And then the sidewalks that go around that neighborhood would be made out of a standard concrete, a scored concrete. Next slide. Moving on to the pool courtyard. So both the lower amenity terrace and the slightly raised pool terrace will be made out of a unit paper material. We can get different variations in color and things like that that really work well with the final selection of the building facades. There'll be an activating element which would be an outdoor kitchen that'll likely be made of some type of wood veneer. May have a, a stone veneer component to it. The countertops will probably be some type of a precast and the appliances themselves will be likely a stainless steel. There'll be, again, the same type of lighting that we're using in the other courtyard. So a combination of the low ballards and then some of the taller lights for more of the safety lighting, those pedestrian scale LED fixtures. In the pool terrace will also have another shade structure that again will be likely made of wood. Possibly with some metal structure to it. And then on the far left side of the plan, there'll be a lawn space that'll be surrounded by an accessible concrete walkway. Next slide. Recreation courtyard is more vegetated than the other ones. So again, we'll have that native grass buffer between the courtyard patios and be made out of concrete. We'll have that perimeter walk, which will also be a standard concrete. We have a section there that we've called out as the lawn mounds. I think we talked about that before that we're looking to have some playful topography. That'll just be you know, a standard lawn that'll be kind of maintained in that that shape. And then we'll have an area that is kind of that small amenity area that'll be a stone dust surface. So sort of a softer treatment there that'll have some of the movable furniture and other fire pits and grill components. It'll be sort of in that area that gets activated. And then we have a grove of trees that is closer to the walkway into the neighborhood street. And we thought it would be nice to, within that grove of trees, to have some down lighting. So trees that get, or lights that get mounted into the tree structure and then kind of shoot down to highlight the branches and things like that to create mood lighting. Next slide.
I jumped in real quick.
Sure.
And so on there, it says gas powered grills. What kind of gas are you talking?
Natural gas.
Okay, because there's the moratorium on gas, so I don't know.
So we, we've begun to coordinate that with Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light. We've, they've tentatively approved, since there's already gas service to the site, they've tentatively approved using limited amounts of gas for some amenity, which is what we were planning for here. But the buildings itself. You know, in terms of units, that'll all be electric here.
Okay. Thanks.
And then moving to the village center. So again, the lighting is And then moving to the village center, so again, the lighting is the same concept in terms of the ballards and the streetlights. We are showing up against the building, this idea of string lights which would be, you know, more sort of festive, low level lighting to kind of create mood. Where there may be some indoor outdoor use between the the building and the outdoor space adjacent to the building. Movable furniture, we'd like to to use colorful bistro style seating there, so it kind of catches your eye and makes it a playful feeling space. Out towards the lake where we have some grade change that we need to accommodate. We're thinking we would have sort of a modular seat wall that'll be stepped, so maybe sort of almost like a bleacher approach. Where there's two levels of seating that make up that grade change, you can imagine people sitting on those and kind of looking out at the lake and just sort of hanging out. The paving materials, so the the path itself, the community path would be an asphalt material. The primary. Lands or the primary hardscape on either side of the building would be a standard concrete. And then that central portion, we're thinking we do something with a interesting pattern. Something that would be a unit paper that would also be able to accommodate the vehicular loading that we know. For emergency access would have to happen between those, the two buildings. Next slide. And then the restaurant terrace, again, a lot of the same materials. The hardscape would be a combination of scored concrete, we're showing two different colors here because we want to be able to signify. One material maybe in the areas where the actual dining is taking place. And have that be different from the route that would connect pedestrians from the neighborhood street down to the lake path, so maybe there's a different color in the concrete or a different treatment in the joints. Again, like low level Ballard lighting, the path itself will be asphalt and then we have lawn areas in addition to the planting that we've, we've talked about previously. And then the community path, again, where we have to span over these rain gardens, the idea of a footbridge that would be made out of a composite decking material. The pathways are asphalt, and then we've talked quite a bit about the rain garden plantings. The lighting along this edge will be treated with Ballard lights, so it'll be a low level light that really focuses the light where we need it, which is. On the walking surface and not out beyond the limits of of where we're doing the work. So that's a walkthrough quickly through the materials, and then in terms of the site lighting. We wanted to do two things with that, first, show you what the light fixtures were. But secondly, and more importantly, I think, kind of describe the approach with the photometrics. And so the way we wanted to sort of visually display this is to create kind of a heat map approach where we took the calculations that our lighting engineer. Prepared based on the foot candle levels and assigned colors to those. So that you can graphically understand sort of where the the brightest parts are versus where the light dissipates. And really, we want to be able to do that to show that we're responsibly lighting the site and able. Find ways to really kind of control that light distribution so that we're only lighting and focusing in the areas where. We have those safety concerns and not over lighting and, you know, importantly, not having sort of light trespass. Beyond the property line and into some of those sensitive environmental areas. So the way we've depicted this is the brightest light is shown with red, which is closest to where the light is itself. And then that graduates down to blue and then ultimately to black where there is no light readings. So you can see that where we have the concentration of light, there's the red, that's right at the center of the light and then it, it, that would be a five foot candle reading. And then it goes down to the orange, which would be four. To yellow, which would be two foot candles and then green would be one and then the blue is basically nothing, there's small levels of light reading, but it's basically tapering down to zero. So that's kind of what that that graphic is depicting. In terms of the light itself, so along the existing parkway, we have those old style shoebox lights. Which really don't do a good job of controlling the light spill, they kind of just. Spread it out in all directions, they're not a very efficient fixture. What we're proposing to do is to maintain the existing wiring and the existing pole locations, but to relamp those. Lights to take away the shoebox fixtures and put on high performance LED lights. That have a dark sky component, so the light trespass won't go vertical above the light fixture itself. But also it'll have an asymmetrical distribution, so that light will really be focused. Sort of right in that immediate area of where the light is and not really go out beyond, and you can see how on the diagram that blue is really sort of. Tapering off and there isn't a lot of light beyond the areas that are the road. And then when it comes to some of the more landscape level lights, again, we have these Ballard lights which are low, lower level lights, three feet or so high. Really keeping that light down close to the pavement level. And, and you know, sort of controlling the light so that it's only within the vicinity of the light itself and not really spreading out to, you know, far extent. Again, I had mentioned that sort of string lighting effect, so those are really not lights that contribute. Significantly to foot candles, but really create more of mood lighting. And then the idea of these tree lights which would be positioned in the canopy of the trees. Positioned down and really, you know, sort of trying to highlight some of those specimen trees to really make them part of a nighttime landscape. And there's one more slide, this kind of puts it all together, so you can kind of zoom out and just see. How the light is being controlled and how it's, you know, tapering off and and basically stopping once you get to the edges of the property and. Also towards the more environmentally sensitive area of the lake.
And that's our last slide. Yes, Ian, sorry, this Dave, who provided this, you said there was a lighting engineer?
Yes, so we worked with a lighting rep who is also an engineer, and so we, you know. Came up with the concept of where the lights would be and then they picked the fixtures and ran the photometrics based on those.
And who was that?
I believe it was a gentleman from Omni Light, but they may have changed their name, I think that company had, has merged with another company. But we have that information, we can get that.
Okay, no, I was just curious. Sometimes we get photometric plans and, you know, we know who the company is, who the engineer was that put it together and. You know. You know, I get what you're presenting, I was just curious, you know, sort of the the professional engineer behind it. That did that part of the study, okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to point out, you know, there's Ballard lighting on the new public path that Ian. Referenced, you can see it. And that was something that we had, we had conversations with the police chief that he was. Glad, you know, it's really a safety issue, so if people want to recreate the lake after dark. They now have a path where they can see things in front of them, it's not a noxious light, it's a very dim light, but it's, it's lit and. And please remember that CCNF has made a commitment to keep that path clear year round, so it'll be cleared with ice and snow and maintained.
Ian?
Yes.
I don't remember whether. The ring road, so to speak. Has a walkway around it? Connected with it?
It does not.
It does not. Because I'm, I'm looking at the lights that you got on the street. And they're, they're very high poles. And I always find them. More commercial. Than residential in their heights. So, and I understand what you said was that you're trying to keep. The pole locations where they are now. And if you were to lower them, I suppose that causes a certain amount of problem, but. I just find those poles that are like twelve to fifteen, twenty feet high. Just not very residential, they're more like a parkway. And this is not, I don't think you want this to look like a parkway. So I would suggest you look at. How you handle those lights, even if you have to put more in. Around the perimeter of this, so it gives it more residential feeling. The other thing is I'm wondering. Particularly right now. Is the trees that are out along the highway, some of that's, you know, in the state. Zone. But I'm wondering whether that should be densified. Particularly off season with trees with, you know. Trees that basically are going to keep their needles or whatever on them. Because the rest of it basically are going to drop their leaves. And you're going to get even more exposure of this building. And the sound that goes with it.
Evergreen trees.
Yeah, so if they're, if they've got, you know, if they've got needles and everything else still on them, then they become an absorptive, absorptive barrier. Against some of that noise at the same time. May happen during the summer with the leaves on the other trees, but during the winter. It, you lose the deadening effect that that's there.
Sure. Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Has there been any, and maybe this is for Madison like that, anybody discussed? Solar panels?
We, we have looked into it. We have, we have looked into it for the site, I, I think we're, we want to keep the option open potentially for the garage can be a decent candidate. We've looked at it for residential rooftops before, it's a little bit challenging to get a productive system with. You know, all the HVAC units that are associated with these residential projects. But, I, I, I'm. Totally happy to take a deeper look again.
Yeah, if you would, like you're saying, like the garage area, potentially, there was. There was another project. In the last number of years where they came in and asked. To put up a structure on the garage to be a solar collector. In the, and it was their garages basically they did this on. Of course, the appearance of that has. Maybe a detrimental effect, I don't know, it depends on how it's done, basically. But I would, I would pursue it anyway. At the mo, at this moment.
Yeah, we can take a look at that, also, I'll make sure that we. We look at into your recommendation on the evergreens bordering the highway and. Just wanted to make two quick notes on the lighting, so Chairman Hatfield, the study was done by Apex Lighting Solutions. They also did the previous photometrics plan for the. Twenty twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen special permit file for the site as well.
Well, this is, this, this that presented is very interesting in that. You know, norm, normally what we get basically is an overlay. It's almost like a contour plan. In that it just shows a bunch of lines and what the intensity is. This, on the other hand, gives us a real. Time sort of appearance in the colors that you can tell the intensity. Of what's happening on the ground as opposed to looking to. A contour lighting plan, basically, so to speak, so this is very interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, any other board members with comments, questions on the lighting? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, real quick on the outside amenities. So, like my earlier question, is how, is that open to, is that private or public?
The, the outdoor amenities such as, I guess what we call the village center tonight, you know, this area.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the intent here is that this is really going to be something, an area that is a. Public, private interface, I think this certainly is going to have a bunch of seating that. In, in reality, especially, you know, the way we've designed this, the tiered seawall, I think that is really intended for the public. And I think this is an area that is. Realistically going to be celebrated by both the public and private. You know, nature of this property. The deeper you get into the site where it's the pool courtyards and stuff like that, you know, that, that's intended for private resident use. But this area in particular, I think is really. Really a public, private area.
Okay, yeah, I was assuming you weren't going to let the whole. Town of Wakefield be swimming in that pool, that'd be. Fun for us, but not for the, for you guys. So, all right, I appreciate that, thanks.
Welcome.
I, quick question, Mickey Feely. For the grab and go slash vending machine, I mean. Chip's not here tonight, and I don't know how he feels, I know. Some of the topics that came up last time, one of them were. You know, the amenities, they should be amenities, but they should also. Take away some of the traffic, and I think some of your people mentioned that last time. Give people reasons to stay there rather than to go down the dunks in the car. Or go to Anton's dry cleaning. Or any of that, and I, I, I know vending machine, I, I, I've worked on developments myself where I tried the vending machine idea. And it, it, it didn't fly then, and in my mind, it doesn't fly now. So I was hoping somebody could take a better, a bigger look at that. And. As far as the restaurant goes, I, I'm sure you don't have people there. Potential restaurants and thinking about that yet. But will there be like a build out allowance from the owners? Or is it just going to be a glass box until somebody figures it out?
Yeah, so to address both of those points, you know, point completely taken on the convenience aspect. And we'll, we'll work to provide some solutions that are more comprehensive. On the restaurant, I, I think what we would intend and what we would plan to do is provide. Fit out allowance to a tenant, I, I think for us, we want to make sure that that space is occupied. That's the front door to our project, we, we don't want that to be an empty space. One of the better ways we can assure that that happens is provide a tenant, you know, tenant improvement allowance to make that happen.
Yeah, well, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Can we go back to the, kind of the overview of the way you showed the amenities, where it's kind of like that aerial rendering shot?
That's the one, Amy?
No, it was the whole, it was the bigger picture.
Right there?
No. It's there.
The outside one or the?
Yeah, that right there, yeah. Can you show, oh, I'm seeing it now, okay, I wasn't seeing it before, the public safety office. So that's the one with. With Wakefield PD, or that's the one with the security inside the. Building?
So that was something that we, or really the chief identified as a location that he would want as basically an outpost for Wakefield Police. So, yeah, for that would be for Wakefield Police.
And is there security onsite besides that?
We wouldn't have man security, but we would have twenty four seven, twenty four seven security contract for this property.
Okay, it's not, there wouldn't be security guards like posted at each building or walking.
Not, not security, not security guards, we would have onsite staff. What's typical for projects like these is, you know, you have a twenty four seven security. You know, someone who's looking at, looking at, watching the project twenty four seven. With immediate dispatch. But it's not, you know, anymore, it's not typically man, security guards.
So video monitored remotely.
Yeah, video monitor and there will be onsite presence as well, but not necessarily security presence.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you think else, board members? Brian, was there anything else? Material wise, presentation wise?
No.
Okay. And you'll send us a copy of this presentation so we can get it posted as well?
Yep, we'll send that over.
Okay. All right, if nothing else, we can go up to the public at this time, if anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I'll call on you. And the first hand I see up, Dennis Clardy. Left to come off mute, Mr. Clardy.
Does that picture come up on the screen?
Can you just say your name and address for the record though?
Oh, yeah. Clardy, One Havas Road. Can you see that picture? You can. But, but our properties are connected by water. And my concern is. That. I believe that the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection said that. Quantipolit. Parkway can't be raised. Because it's below the elevation in the nearby wetlands. Is that correct?
Brian, can you, any on the team, address that?
What are you, what are you citing, Mr. Clardy, for law or regulation?
I got the. Uh, I got the, uh, it's my understanding that the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Agency said that the elevation of Quantapower Parkway cannot be raised.
Well, I know, I just asked you, where you, where you, you said that, that said that, where, where? I mean, do you have a publication? Do you have a letter? Do you have a statute? Do you have a regulation? Do you see any?
They, they said that at the Conservation Commission last week.
Oh, we're before the Conservation Commission. So, you know, they, they, they have jurisdictional, you know, DEP comments. So, I mean, that, that's a Conservation Commission issue that would be for them on, not a zoning board issue.
Okay, so I should, uh, but does anyone have any knowledge of that? That that information that was sent to the Conservation Commission? Saying that the Quantapower Parkway could not be out, could not be raised, that the base, base map couldn't be elevated?
If I could respond, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Yeah, so we're, we're in the process of a hearing, a- as you know, a joint hearing with the Conservation Commission in the zoning board. Uh, at the end of the day, both plans are going to have to be in sync. So if, if we're, if what we're representing, we're going to do on this plan can't be done from a conservation standpoint, we're going to have to modify it or adjust it. We're, we're very comfortable where we are, what we've presented. I'm sure that, that there's going to be some changes through conservation that we might have to talk about, but we're, we're pretty comfortable where we are.
Because I was down here at the site today and that, that was, that was the current picture. But, I mean, actually, the water does get quite a bit higher than this, uh, uh, on occasions. But, um, I'm just wondering how, um, if you can't raise Quantapower Parkway, uh, raise the elevation, I, I mean, where is the, you know, maybe I should ask Conservation Commission, where's the water going to flow? Because I mean, literally inches above this, uh, our properties are connected by water and I'm literally inches above that. And my concern is that I don't want to be a retention bond for this project.
Well, I think we, we had, we had, uh, our engineer present that there's going to be increased water stor-, there's going to be increased storage on this site from what's there today. You know, there's going to be improvement for the site from what you see. That's, that's one of the benefits of this project. We actually show pitches like you're showing, uh, during our hearing process here and also at the Conservation Commission.
Don't want the water to be going onto my property, that's all.
Well, that's not the goal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing no other hands going up, we'll close with the public testimony for the evening.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this.
Oh, if I could, Mr. Chair, before, Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of housekeeping items that I need to, needed to address with the chair. Okay, yeah, please, yep, please go ahead.
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna ask Mr. Chair, we can't, we cannot be at the next meeting. Um, so Joe, you need to know that before we made your motion. Uh, anyway, so we can't, we, we cannot make that next meeting. Um, so, and I think, um, from what we heard, three of the members aren't going to be there. So, and I don't think we want to lose, uh, two full-time members anyways on this project because it's been going on so long that Amy's been on it, so has Joe. Uh, and they've given good input. So it's not our goal to lose two, two, um, sitting members of the board on this. So, um, we, we, we aren't going to be at the next meeting. Uh, what I was going to ask, Mr. Chair, for the board to potentially consider is two things. Uh, first of all, if the board would consider, or you as chair, would consider designating Mr. McBane to be able to talk with our architect, Cube Three, on this issue on the highway. Um, just because, um, um, we are, as you, as you would seem, very willing to work on this issue. Mr. McBane has knowledge and is qualified and certainly has thoughts. And instead of us throwing arrows in the dock and trying to, you know, hit, hit the bullseye, um, if he could be designated to be able to work with Cube Three offline, so he could communicate with them and try to come up with something that's going to be beneficial to everybody, um, in, in as expedited fashion as possible. So that's the first thing I would request the board, um, to respectfully consider if he will be willing to do that. Um, it's not like a total architecture review of the project with just that one aspect, which he certainly has, uh, concerns about and knowledge. And the second thing is
All right, why don't we tackle them one at a time? So, so Jim, are you, I mean, that sounds like a reasonable ask to me and that way we're not going back and doing this two, three, four times, right? And, um, uh, but Jim, would you be willing to do that and, and maybe wait with them offline and that way when they come back with something that's, um, we have a better chance of being closer to the target for, for everyone to be comfortable with.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So Brian, what, what, yep.
Yeah, and this, and the second request is, and this is something that was touched on by Mr. Lucy at the last meeting, you know, the, uh, he, he had mentioned the condition on, um, protect, on the contribution for traffic and Quantapower Parkway and and, and the concern on, you know, some of the complexity of that condition. And, and, you know, as we go on, you know, we, we continually are making, you know, some, um, um, some pretty significant promises here that we're all docketing. Um, some of which are going to take some input from town administrative staff, such as the town engineer, uh, potentially the DPW director on some of the commitments that we've made offsite. Um, possibly town council. Um, so, you know, as is typical with these projects, when they get to a certain point, you know, I would, you know, sometimes be designated to draft conditions, suggested conditions. I would respectfully consider, uh, request that the board would consider, um, or you on your own, if you have the authority to do it, and I'm, I guess through the board as a whole, would consider designating you, Mr. Chair, to work with us on that. Um, so that if, you know, as we start putting, uh, con- uh, condition, draft conditions for consideration for the board to look at and making the decision on the project, um, that, that when we, when we talk to the town engineer and administrative staff, that you would participate in that uh, to make sure that, um, uh, the, the, you know, that we're on the same page. Instead of us coming back on a project of this nature and saying, oh, we, we talked to the town engineer and this is what he said and indoor town council, we, we would actually be more comfortable if you, Mr. Chair, would participate in some of those discussions in crafting the decisions, uh, conditions, uh, for the full board's consideration. Because there's a lot of them and some of them, as Tom Lucy had said, are going to be pretty complex. And, um, so I think that that will be helpful.
Fine by me. Board members, any concerns or questions about that? I I have no problem participating in that, those aspects. I would expect to be as we get towards the end game anyway. Um, but have, helping to get them properly drafted, um, you know, like we did with Crescent, there was a subcommittee helping you do it. In this case, it's really just, yeah, me working with you and meeting with town officials and not necessarily creating a new subcommittee to go do that, but just myself, sounds, sounds fine to me.
Yeah, informing the list, you know, because there's a big list and we, and, you know, to go back on the record and make sure that nothing is missed.
I hereby volunteer you, David.
Wow, that, okay. Second, all in favor? Got it. All right. All right, sounds good, Brian.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. All right, anything else from anyone? Before we entertain a request to continue to March ninth.
Yeah.
Right? Because you're not here in the next hearing, so.
All right, we continue this to our March ninth meeting.
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, ready voting members, Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Uh, Greg?
Yes.
And Ivo, yes. All right, thanks for the updates tonight, team. Uh, Brian, if you can, uh, please send us the, the presentation that was sent tonight.
Yeah, you'll do that, right?
Or Matt, yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you.
He's better at that than me.
All right, and we'll look forward to some offline discussions, um, with Jim and the architect team and I'll work with you on the, on the other aspects. We talked about them. We'll see you back in, uh, in March. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Right, on to a new hearing. Twenty-two dash thirty-six, Derek and Krista Popek, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly, at two fifty-nine Vernon Street.
Unmute here. Here we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I'm David Johnson, um, Studio Twenty-Six Architects in Wayland, Massachusetts. And I'm the architect for, uh, Derek and Krista Popek at, uh, two fifty-nine Vernon Street.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to, uh, I guess we need to screen share uh, and go through the drawings, uh, site plan and, uh, drawings. Uh, what we're looking to do, we have a, uh, the project
Copy you can share electronically?
Electronically? I, I can share it on screen or I can, uh,
Yep, yep, if you can, just for the on the board members, members of the public. I mean, I've got a copy of your official file, but
Yep.
Um, in case there's anything the board members don't have and the members of the public, so.
Yep, everything, uh, all the, all the drawings that we have are, uh, uh, were in fact submitted. So we have this here. Is that being shared right now?
Not yet.
Not, not yet, yeah.
Okay, we have a shared screen clicked here. My apologies, what am I, what am I missing here to?
So you picked share screen and then you picked something? Did you share your whole screen or a certain application?
Um, we've got a file here that has all the, all of our PDFs in it for you.
So if you pick that application, it should show up.
Open your PDF file.
Yeah, everything is open, right?
Everything is open, yeah.
And then you're clicking the share, blue share button in the bottom once you pick something?
Sorry about this. I have to click share. I'm not sure why it's, um, my apologies here.
You can try sharing your whole screen. I don't know what else you may have opened, but it may help um, overcome this. I don't know, versus picking an individual window or
Yeah, I'm happy to share the entire screen, which, uh,
You have the options at the top that say basic, advanced files.
Yep.
If you click on files, um, you should be able to
No, but even under basic, even under basic, I mean, he should see his open applications. He should see the word screen. He could share his whole screen. I don't know why it's not working for you. Um, everyone has a permission.
Yeah. If you want to forward me the file you have, oh, here, yeah.
Nope, that was Mike.
Sorry.
I mean, I, I have them, just not probably in the order in which you were going to present them.
So we're seeing your screen. We just saw your email inbox. So if you have them
That was Mike's.
That was mine.
Oh, all right. What are you doing?
Reading his emails.
Yeah, oh, no, no, I was just trying to figure out.
Yeah, no, all participants, the option is there. All participants can share screens, so everyone should be able to do it. Um, I just, I don't have a copy of the electronic, you know, I've got the paper, but, uh, so I can't do it. Anyone else trying? You both still trying?
Yeah.
I'm not, but David, I do have them. If you want to email them to me quickly in the order in which you want, I can go through it and share it.
So Dave, maybe while they straighten it out, we take the next hearing and let them give, uh, give them a second to kind of straighten out the
Yeah, my, my apologies for this. We had this all set up and, uh,
Oh, it happens. I'm just saying, give it, so you not have to do it in real time, but they won't, you know, maybe we move on, come back.
Right, I mean, the, the next thing is, um, we could go to Harvard Mills. We got another matter on Harvard Mills. Um, so we could bring Brian back and talk about that. Do, are, are you okay with that?
Yes, absolutely, please.
All right. All right, so if you just want to go on mute and talk it through and we'll come back to you in a few minutes. Didn't take too long, but we'll come back to you. All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So we're going to move on to other matters because that was our, uh, all the other new hearing for the evening. So, um, application nineteen dash forty through forty-four, one sixty-eight Albion Street, NRP Harvard Mills. So Brian, if you want to come back, you
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it. Um, so we're back on Harvard Mills. Um, Matt Treyberg is here and Tom Knott on behalf of, uh, NRP. Um, here for, for a couple of reasons. Want to kind of give the board an update. Um, and I'm sure Amy and Jim will, um, to refresh the board's memory, we were before the board and on October twenty-seventh on this. And at that time, the board voted to authorize a temporary certificate of occupancy for the first floor. Um, and designated, um, Amy and Jim, uh, as the board members to, um, to, to, uh, to make a determination as to the completion of the, of the project, uh, for the board for the final CO. Um, so, um, what transpired after October twenty-seventh, NRP at that point decided to forego a temporary cer- uh, certificate of occupancy and, and pursue completion of the project, which they're very close now. Um, since that time, Amy and Jim have been kind enough to, uh, to, um, come out to the property twice uh, with us and do sidewalks. Um, we were out there about two weeks ago, week and a half ago, uh, on our last one. Um, really keeping track of what, um, has been, what's been done and, and, and what's left. And also a couple of changes in the landscaping features that we want to kind of show the board and get the board's blessing on. Um, we initially anticipated that we would come tonight and, and do that and try to get a, try to bond in a month to get a final certificate of occupancy. Um, which, you know, I think the chair knows can, can kind of be complicated sometimes. So uh, rather than doing that, what we've decided to do is to, um, after talking to, uh, the building inspector today is what we're requesting is, is to update the board. Um, to ask the board to, um, tell Ben that you're okay, if he's okay, to issue a temporary CO for the entire building because the inside of the building is pretty much done. Um, just a temporary CO, uh, with the final CO to follow shortly, uh, once everything is completed because and, uh, when we last walked the property with Amy and Jim about a week and a half ago, as I mentioned, we said, you know what, some of this stuff is going to be, you know, maybe not that easy to do with the snow coming. So we'll just bond it and, and finish it up in the spring. But now the snow has dissipated. The weather's gotten better and Tom Knott is comfortable that he can have pretty much everything done for a final sign-off, including by Jim and Amy within about thirty days for the final CO. But we do need a temporary CO to get some people in there because they have some tenant movements coming in. So, um, with that said, I think it would be probably best if I bring up a plan that will kind of describe, um, what tran- has, what transpired at our site visit in some, what I think are minor changes. I think Amy and Jim agreed, but the board needs to opine. And then, um, ask you to approve those minor changes and then, um, authorize a temporary CO for the entire building instead of just the third floor for, for Ben to be able to issue. So this is, I had Tom kind of do a plan that would be helpful to not only the entire board, but to Amy and Jim, who are going to have to go out on the final CO to confirm that everything's been done. And when we walked the building, uh, on the outside, pretty much everything was done except for the front entry area, um, which was still under construction in the planting. So what Tom Knott has done is, he's highlighted in yellow, uh, Amy and Jim, everything that you would Everything that you were not able to inspect, because that, that stuff was not in when you were out last, okay? And that also includes the, the dog park. And the plantings that were in the, in the work that was going to take clear, take place there. So we expect within the next 30 days, we're going to have you all to complete your inspection in those areas or ask you to do that. What the red is, is some changes that we noted, Amy and Jim, when we were at the site. And I'm going to, I'm going to kind of highlight those for the board and Tommy, if you can come off mute, because you might be able to help me, because you were on the site visit too. So.
No problem, right?
Yep, so the first is, there's an annual planter in front of leasing signage, okay? And you want to hit on that, Tom, what that is highlighted for, the red up here?
Yeah, that's, so we got, we got various planters and, and various locations, I think. If you look at every entry to the building, there's a planter that is right next to it, it's, it's fed with the irrigation. Through the planter, so we have water to it at all times, and that's just a typical detail showing that. There'll be annuals, they'll plant all the annuals in those planters throughout the year.
Yeah, so that's just to show that that's going to be done, it can't be done now, we're not going to plant annuals, but we just, we're just documenting it to confirm it. Okay. So, and then in this area, Tom, where I'm circling, where we have the six CLs.
Yeah, the original plan showed three CLs there, but the landscape architect wanted to fill it out a little bit more, three wasn't enough, so they made a change to six.
Yeah, and Amy, I think you and Jim remember, we saw that, that that had been increased, so it's really just asking for approval to increase the number of plants in that area that were put in. And then over here, Tom, we have one BL and one MD.
Yep, so the MDs are the, the Siberian carpet cypress. That was added along with the six, I'm sorry, the BL, the one BL, which was a, it's a Fox Valley River birch. So those were added by the landscape architect in a bulletin to, again, fill the space out on the butter side, the other tenant, the other side of the building, 178 Albion. That's, you know, in front of their patio on their side.
So these were, these were not on the original plan and the landscape architect decided we needed to fill this area, so we put them in.
Correct.
There's extra plantings, okay? All right, and then we have here, one existing tree noted to be saved was toppled by storm event, so existing tree to be replaced with one NS, what's that, Tom?
And then that's a black tapelo. It. That is, I have no idea what that is, but it's a black, black.
And that's what's been specced by a landscape architect to go in there and replace that tree that was, that was destroyed in the storm.
Correct, yeah.
What was the, what was the caliber of the tree, the, you know, the age, and what are we replacing it with? I'm going to channel my inner chip now.
I think it was a tree that was toppled, Tom.
It was. I'd say around a 12 inch, you can see it in the background there, I believe it, it, I'd have to go to a different version, because this is the updated plan. But I believe it was a, it was either, it was either a 12 or a 13 inch. Oh God, it was a, it was a regular, it wasn't a pine, it was a maple, and it got, there was, we had the high winds, it actually got hit by lightning, because it split it right in the middle of it, it was pretty.
So what are you proposing here for the NS, Tom, what's the caliber?
It is, again, forgive me, because I'm not a, I'm not a planting, it's, it's a minimum size, two and a half inch to three inch.
That's pretty standard, Mr. Chair. Usually a two and a half. You know, putting my landscape architect hat on, you know, the bigger the caliper tree you plant, the less likelihood of success, you know, the, the. The landscape architects always say they're going to grow faster if they're, if they're, if they're a lesser caliber, instead of trying to put like a six or eight inch caliper in there.
No, and I'm not going to challenge that, I just, you know, like, is this going to grow to be the similar size of what was there? And it just may take 20 years, or is it, is it just a different species, again, without that architect here, or dip maybe?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can, we can, we can get you the, we can get some spec on that.
Absolutely.
We're not, we're not here, you know, we, this is kind of like a, an update, and we eventually need these changes approved, we, we don't need them tonight, because we don't need them for TCO, so. So we, we have some time that we can get you some information on that.
That's fine, I don't want to belabor it, I mean, you know, something happened to the tree and you're going to replace it, that's great, it just. Just, yeah, some clarification on what you're replacing with and will it sort of fill out to be similar to what was there?
Yeah, and I'll be able to get, I'll get you the, the accurate size of what that tree, the, the existing tree that got, that got damaged.
I think Tom, the message to landscape architect is, what's the size and what's the best thing to put there to replace it as fast as possible?
Okay.
All right, maybe it's a different phrase that you're suggesting, so, okay. And then, and Amy and Jimmy, I think you remember this, so this had, this was specced in this area, that it was going to be bayberry, northern bayberry. And the landscape architect determined out there that a better shrub was a rhododendrum. So he, in this area, he went from eight northern bayberry to nine rhododendrum, and, and then on this side, he switched out. Bayberry to rhododendrum also, and, you know, Amy and Jim, I think you guys, can you maybe opine on that for the board, your feelings on that, because that's really your, you know. That's your call.
Yeah, I mean, I thought everything looked fine. The minus, the minus, which is I also don't know what a bayberry is, I don't know, we learned a lot about plant abbreviations and, and things like that, but. But I think it looked fine with the, with the roadies in there.
I agree.
Yeah, they were well done.
So the problem with that, Brian, just so everybody knows, the, the neighbors building, their footing. Stuck out further than expected, so we had to get a plant that had, that was able to grow in a more shallow, shallower bed than what was the, what was intended.
Okay.
Okay.
And really, the last change was, was, I think this was a positive, that this is on the garage side on Foundry Street. So there were 11 plant, there were six plants proposed in this area, you can see them. There were six, but six didn't fill the area, so the landscape architect planted 11. It needed it to fill this area of the sidewalk, it was going to be two, two spas, so he, he almost doubled it. So, you know, ironically, the, the change, the majority of the changes here are adding plants that weren't, because, you know, when they get out in the field, they, they thought that they needed it to make it look right.
Okay.
And then, and then this is what's going to be happening on the, on the park, which is going to be under construction for the next 30 days. So eventually, you know, as, as Jim and Amy said, we have to come back to you for approval of these changes. We know we got the tree, we just kind of want to make sure that, you know, since we're going to be looking for final CO. You know, would the board be inclined to be okay with these changes as, as shown? As a minor modification?
I, I would recommend that the board do approve these changes, at the same time, note that. In the parking lot at the rear, some of the materials there, it's just not installed at this point, and some of that material. That's back there stored, may in fact be going to the front entry. I would also point out that there's a lot of lilies, other sorts of things that are flush with the ground, you might once in a while understand where they are. By counting a few dead leaves, because they do die back during the winter. So we, given how these were put in, a lot of the stuff is put in late, is we don't know what we're going to get. In the spring, whether we're going to get some dieback or not, so keeping that in mind, I think we need to. Hold some money eventually on this, at the same time, it's not, I don't know whether Brian's going to tell us, but a lot of the hardscape out there was not complete. And that's particularly in the court area, but also in the back parking lot, some areas there, so. Keeping that in mind, it's, it's not just planting, we should be holding, but also hardscape.
Yeah, and a lot of that is now done all up here now, Jim, that wasn't done. And, you know, I think, so, you know, we're not, we're not looking for any, the only thing we're looking for tonight is just a, you know, an okay to Ben, that you're, the temporary certificate of occupancy. When it gets to final. Then those issues would be, you know, something for discussion, you know, I, I, I. We counted all the plants, even the ones that, you know, hopefully are going to come back. You know, the condition of the special permit is, we have to, we have a landscape plan we have to maintain, so. If you go out there in the spring and find out that, you know, 12 lilies haven't come back, they have a condition that they have to, they have to replace them.
Yeah, Brian, it, just, it might be good for everybody to know that. The, the site subcontractor, Greena Group, they own one year of maintenance on everything out there from the time of acceptance, so that's from final CO. So the clock hasn't even started ticking on all the plants, so.
That's your sub, that's your sub.
Correct.
Yeah, you guys own it forever, so, but it's good that the, that, that the subcontractor holds, owes it for a year, so, you know. So, Jim, I hear you, I agree with you, and I, and I think that that's, that's going to be, that's addressed within the, within the decision. And when it comes time for final CO, and we've done this with Bill Reno through town council on, they wanted a warrant, they wanted a specific written warranty. From NRP on the sidewalks, work was done, Bill Reno and Tom wanted a, a two-year written warranty, because we did all the sidewalk work out there. And we did that, so we can certainly give the board and the town a warranty on the landscaping, you know, just a letter that, you know, acknowledging the responsibility on it.
Where do we stand with all the. Signage that was at the front entry, because they were still constructing the panels, that that signage was going to go on?
Tom?
It's all done.
Are the signs up?
The signs are all up at the front entry, that you see from the outside walk, all the signs are up.
Okay. Even the, the point stuff, that, aren't you supposed to see that from Mark, I mean, I go by there every day, and I haven't seen that, you know, the bell we talked about, the, the hand painted or image.
Yeah, that's, that's. That's on that, that's on the wooden flat wall, but it's around the corner, that you're, you're talking about where you're walking into the courtyard. Correct, that, right on the flat wall, right in front of your face, if you were walking into the courtyard.
Yeah, I thought it was supposed to be walking into the courtyard, but it would face the 711, so you should be able to see it from outside, right?
Right. Yep, that, that, that sign is not in, that, that's getting done by Otis, Mark, maybe you could speak to that on. When they're going to be jumping on that stuff?
Yeah, I think they were just waiting to get final measurements from all the site walls, now that those are up, they have those, so they should be installing those before the middle of the month here. And you're correct, you should be able to see that, when you're standing next to kind of the memorial tree there, you should be able to see that plaque.
Okay, but again, all that comes into play with the final CO, right, Brian, I mean.
That's right.
Because we'd be issuing a letter saying, you're, you're done satisfied, you know, the work has satisfied all our conditions, and that means everything, right, so.
That's right, if it hasn't, then we would, you know, give a, you know, a, you know, basically a warranty that's going to be done or something satisfactory to you and town council.
Right.
At the time of final CO.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we just kind of wanted to, you know, all's we really need tonight is kind of like, you're like, yeah, we're, you know, not even a vote at this point, but, you know, when we do. When we do, you know, when we figure out that tree issued, Dave, that the board's okay with these changes and adding these plants, and that would be time, you know. At the time of final CO, you could approve these changes at the same time.
Right, but.
There might be more, you know, as we, as we look at these yellow spots with Amy and Jim, that's why I don't even think it's a, I wouldn't vote on this tonight, because it might change a little bit more.
But you, you said you had a discussion with the building inspector, is he looking for a letter from this board?
For a CO, yeah, for a temporary CO, just a temporary CO for the entire building.
How long are you looking for the temporary CO for, and the reason I ask is obviously our only recourse is to say, and the building inspector. You know, the temporary CO is revoked, and then we're getting into, I think last time it was for a few people to move in on the first floor, now it's for the whole building. You know, are we really going to want to get into the. The business of then telling. Then Wakefield residents will book, you know, you guys have to move out, sorry, you have no place to live, because. You know, it, it's, it's getting into, yes, it's plants. And our only recourse is to revoke your CO, are we really going to do that? For over plants, so in reality, we have no recourse.
Well, I mean, Benny, he'll only issue it on 30-day intervals, and, and the tenants know that, you know, they told that, that, that that's, you know, the circumstance. And. You know, your, your other recourse is, you know, to enforce a special permit condition, do it, you know, you, you know, you got to do it, just like if they all died, we would have to do it. So, and, you know, I don't think NRP is showing anything but like, real good faith on this whole thing, I mean, they've done everything, you know, that, that every department in town has wanted. They've even, they've even, and, and this board doesn't even know this, but. On Foundry Street, from the intersection of Albion all the way down to Maple, you know, as you remember, they did all this staging on the street, and, you know, so, and then they put the water line in. And Bill Reno, the town engineer, said to them, it would be great if you guys repaved the whole street from Albion to Maple. And NRP corporate looked at it and said, you know what, the town let a stage there. And number one, and number two, that paving is only going to improve our project for our tenants. So they're donating $77,000 as a gift, I've actually got a letter going to the town council to donate $77,000 to repave the street. So the, I don't think, I understand the concern, Greg, but I don't think they're going, going anywhere over, over a few plants, not getting their final CO. Everything else.
Understood, but I think we, we need to understand the reality of the situation before we.
Yeah.
You know, you, you, and not trying to take away what he's saying, but it was kind of thrown out there, yeah, we're just looking for a temporary CO, oh, it's nothing, I mean. At this stage, essentially, yeah, temporary CO is, you know, seemingly minor, but. We're letting people move in at this point, so it is, you know, essentially a final step. Yeah, the, the, the permanent CO, if you want to call it that, the regular CO will come later, but this is essentially the final step, we're letting people move in.
Brian, could we, could we say, yeah, we'll let you do it in for 30 days, but if you don't get the final CO in 30 days, to have you stop moving people from coming in? I mean, I, I'm fine with giving you a temp CO, I'm fine with Ben doing it, I mean, if it's.
Well, we don't, this board doesn't do that, that's building inspector.
Yeah, I mean, and, and the thing is too, this is, this building's going to lease up, I mean, Mark, we're not talking like, you know. What are you, what are you talking about, numbers moving in?
Yeah, if, if so, if I may, the, all of the tenants under a temporary CO condition will need to sign a paper. Acknowledging that they are moving in under a temporary CO. And there is a potential that, you know, that temporary CO might be revoked, so they will acknowledge that on the time of, at the time of move-in. And then in addition to that, for February, we only have, I think, three move-ins scheduled. We have for March, I think, another, another two or three right now, so we're, we're talking to get to April 1st, six move-ins right now.
Okay. So again, the board members.
Sorry, if I could just add one more thing, you know, it's in our best interest to make sure that all of these plantings look really good, because we want to lease up this building. So I think it, we actually even have more incentive than, than you all do, to make sure that this really does look top-notch.
So Brian, normally with a final CO, we're, again. Sending a letter to the building inspector stating that you've completed everything, all the conditions of this board. And it's his jurisdiction to do what he wants, right, because there might be other factors related, fire and whatever else, engineering. But we penned a letter saying they've met all our conditions, what, in the case of this request for a temporary CO, what's the structure of that request then?
It would just say, it would just say that we've requested temporary CO for the entire building and, and, and the, in. Although the board's conditions have not been fully met, there's been a commitment to do so prior to permanent CO. Or, you know, or to the satisfaction of the board, and the board doesn't object.
Uh, or, you know, or uh, uh, to the satisfaction of the board and the board doesn't object to the building inspector doing it at his discretion. Just like you would, cause you don't tell Ben what to do, you, you just basically say, you don't have an issue, Ben, but you know, I mean, I'm sorry, we, we, the board don't have an issue, you might, but we're good if you are, you know, that's, that's, so that, that's, that's what it would say, I will work with you on that letter, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And noting the main thing is that, yeah, that,
It's only temporary.
Temporary and, and we expect a final with the, yeah, these final landscaping changes. Okay. All right, board members, any other comments, questions on this one?
No.
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so we don't, don't need a vote, right, Brian, on this?
Just on the temporary C O.
Oh, so we do need to vote on, on um,
And then we'll be, we're, we're going in the right direction on the landscape and we'll be back with, you know, final changes and hopefully a blessing from Amy and Jim and the, and the not too distant future on the final C O.
All right, so we need a motion to authorize um, recommendation of a temp C O to the building inspector.
Mr. Chair, I move we allow Ben to issue a temp C O?
Um, no, we're not, no, no, we gotta re, rework that motion, sorry, Joe.
Yeah, for Dave to draft a letter, or I guess I should say, I move, that the board designates Mr. Hatfield as chair to draft a letter to the building inspector, that although all our conditions of our previous decision have not been met, the board is okay if he chooses to do so to issue a temporary, certificate of occupancy.
That's, that's a little closer to what we need. Thank you. Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Brian, do you think that covers it?
Yep.
Okay. All right, um, then um, uh, Greg, since you made the motion, uh, we'll include you in the, in the final vote, of course, uh, so all in favor, Greg?
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. All right.
Thank you very much, board members. Appreciate it. Looking forward to it being done. Also. Very close now.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. So back to our new hearing, twenty-two dash thirty-six. Hey, there we go.
Yeah, my, my apologies, Mr. Chair and the, and to the board for, I think we've got everything we need now. Yes.
Okay. All right, so if you can just start at the top, um, give us a summary of what you're looking to do and, and use the plans to uh,
Yep.
Describe what uh, the sort of relief you need from this board and we'll go from there.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, my name is David Johnson, I'm the architect for uh Derek and uh Krista Popek. Uh, the property is at two fifty-nine Vernon Street on the corner of uh Vernon and Wayland Road. And uh, the, it's in the S R, uh, single residence uh district. Um, we have uh, a couple uh pre-existing non-conforming uh conditions. The one of which that we're, we're looking at is there's a, uh, currently a uh single car garage to the left of the property, uh, that you see garage to be raised on the site plan there. And um, the, the current back corner of the garage is approximately two and a half feet off the lot line. And uh, what we're looking to do is build a, um, a, a more, a more modern garage, useful garage and uh, as well as connected to the house. And what we've done in the proposal here is uh, to try to get uh the new work uh more conforming, but still work with the uh, uh connection to the rest of the house. So the, the, the two and a half foot um setback on the current garage is being removed. Uh, the proposal here has it to have it square with the house and not uh parallel to the uh, the lot line, which gives us uh, the two and a half feet goes to four and a half feet on the rear uh corner of the new garage here. And from the two and a half feet to about seven, just shy of seven and a half feet here on the uh, on, on the front of the garage. Um, if we can go to the uh, S one, Derek, the next one on the, Yeah, so this is the um, the new foundation work and we'll uh get through these quickly. It's roughly a uh twenty by twenty-eight foot uh two-car garage. There's currently a mudroom uh in the area where it says crawl space. And uh, as I understand from my client, um, while they were away a couple of weeks ago, the, the, the current uh addition that's been there, um, uh, had a bunch of frozen pipes and I'm not sure of the current condition of what they're left with there, what they're dealing with. But uh, um, the, 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 the current addition that's in that location will be raised and uh rebuilt to a more modern uh standard. Um, if you can go to A one, Derek. So this is the, the, the later of the new work and you can kinda see the relationship of the uh, it just slightly reduced on my screen, I don't know what's on yours.
Yeah.
Something's been cut off.
There we go.
That's better.
So thi- this is the layout as it connects to the house, um, with redoing the, the mudroom section, connecting the, the house to the garage. And you can roughly see the overlay of the old garage relative to the new garage. Um, this back corner that we tried to pivot off the new garage to make it the new garage square to the house versus um, parallel to the left, left lot line there. Um, actually after the survey work was done, um, I was trying to keep it on the corner, but actually as, once it was surveyed and the actual um dimensional numbers were worked, um, that's actually a two and a half foot dimension uh in from the, the left rear corner of the garage. Uh, from the uh back in there, from the new to the existing. So we, we, we gained about two and a half feet on that back corner there. And uh, um, as I had said, we, we're gaining about uh, uh, four to four and a half, five feet on the front there. Um, on the second floor of the addition is a new uh bedroom for the house on uh A two. So there's a new uh master bed, bedroom and bathroom and closet above the garage. And then uh bringing the laundry up from the basement uh into the space above the mudroom uh down below. And then if we go to A four, which is the front elevation. And then this is the front of the house uh from Vernon Street. So um, where the cursor is now, that's the existing home. Um, you can see the new two-car garage with the uh, the bedroom up above. Um, trying to keep it in scale and character to uh, to what the existing house is. And then uh, just to round out the picture of the last two elevations, the next drawing. This is the new uh garage side elevation, uh Vernon Road is to the right. And uh, this is now the side that's facing the uh, the left property line on the uh site plan. And then the, the final drawing is the rear of the house, which will show the rear of the garage and the rear of the new uh, uh, second floor structure. And then this is the, the back of the house with the, the garage with the doorway out the back and then those windows up above are the new uh bedroom up above there. So we tried to, you know, make it more conforming uh in the, in the area, keep it uh in keeping with scale, uh, of, of the other houses in the neighborhood. Um, and an attempt to, um, you know, hopefully create something that's no more or less detrimental, um, to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conformity. And in fact, trying to make it uh more conforming than what uh the current garage that uh was built there uh previously.
Mr. Chairman?
If I go back to the site plan, that'd be.
Yep.
Yes, Jim.
So, they're asking for a special permit. I believe they need a variance. What's happened here is that you had two buildings and now all of a sudden, basically, you're extending a whole building, which encompasses a new garage, basically, and it should be a variance they're asking for and not a special permit. So I think they need to refile because they've changed the rules of the game. If it was, if we were just dealing with two components, that would be one thing, but they're, they basically are taking out one component and turning the other building into a larger component, which requires a variance at this point. So, um, I think they've gotta come back to us and meet the, meet the variance requirements, not the special permit requirements.
You, you beat me to it, Jim, but uh, okay, go ahead.
It, it, is, is that true even in the case of the, the component that connects the house, um, to the new garage structure? Uh, actually does meet the uh, the, the current setback, even though it's now connected to a, still a, a non-conforming um side lot line. So even, even though the component that you're talking about that connects it all together, um, that part does meet the uh, the setbacks.
Sorry, Jim, Jim, let me jump in.
Okay.
As it exists today, your garage is an accessory building, it's not attached to the house. Right? Now technically it should be seven and a half feet from the lot line. It's not, it's non-conforming today. If you're just gonna raise and rebuild and make that a bit better garage and, then you would probably have to apply for a finding, cause it's an existing non-conforming structure. If you're just gonna make that improvement and keep it detached, you probably just need a finding on our behalf. That's a different filing as well, a finding versus a variance versus a special permit. But now you wanna attach the whole thing to the house. So now you're extending the house out to that edge of that structure now.
Correct.
And you're proposing to make it four and a half feet from the lot line. The setback's fifteen feet in that district, so that's not conforming at all. Right? Right now, the house as it sits is conforming, cause it, it's, it meets the setbacks. It's non-conforming in that it's a area, the area and the lot size are below what hundreds call for today. So it's an existing, pre-existing, a non-conforming lot today. Um, so any filing to make changes on the site probably needs a filing for us to make a finding that whatever you wanna do, is not gonna make things worse and if they were, they wouldn't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, right? Our typical finding, you can see it in one ninety fifty in our bylaw. Um, so any change probably requires a finding. Subsequent to that, once you attach this garage to the house, you're basically extending the house out to the edge, even though there's a garage in it. You're putting living space above it, you're attaching it to the existing dwelling. Um, now the house goes to four and a half feet to the lot line. You're creating the need for a variance and you're going to have to apply for that, as Mr. McBain said. And justify, i- it's a harder, um, a variance has harder uh criteria to meet than a special permit, cause you have to demonstrate there's a hardship involved. And that you couldn't do something else due to some circumstances that are unique to your lot, topography, um, soil conditions or something, that you couldn't do something else and still meet the bylaw. Right. Um, and you'd have to demonstrate that hardship to this board, so, such that we would then be um inclined to grant that variance, um, for you to do what you wanna do. So, so I, I would agree with Mr. McBain, I would just take it one step farther. I, I, unfortunately, again, a lot of these applications, they have attorneys that help and they typically are well-versed in our bylaws and know based on what you wanna do, what you may need to apply for. Our building department can't recommend and tell you what to do, uh, you really have to research that on your own and figure out what, what kind of relief you need. Um, I think what we're telling you is, you probably need to um reapply for a variance and a finding, if you wanna proceed with this proposal. Um, knowing that you're going to have to convince this board of some sort of hardship. And again, the language is in the bylaw, one ninety sixty-six um has the description of a, of a variance and the criteria for it. Um, and then the special permit maybe goes away, that could be withdrawn without prejudice potentially if it really doesn't apply. Um, we would then have to hear on the variance of the finding at a future meeting, cause you're gonna do notice, it's probably thirty days out or more by the time you file it. Um, and it gets noticed in the paper and the butters and all that. So, um, I just wanna double check my, so one ninety fifty is the funding, which I believe you would need to modify anything on the site, one ninety fifty A. So I would refer you to that. And then one ninety sixty-six on variances. Paragraph A in particular talks about the, the circumstances and the requirements that this board must find. And so you'd have to demonstrate some evidence of, of hardship, if you will, that you need to this lot. Um, and I'm not sure, I'm seeing it again, I haven't, you know, we haven't gone on your lot, I've driven by, I think other board members have probably driven by, were familiar with the site. But without knowing the particulars of, of the lot and any sort of ledge or topography or soil conditions that might contribute to, you're not being able to do something else that would conform with the bylaw, uh, we'd have to understand those, that rationale from you, so.
Sure.
Uh, let's see, so that was my, my version of where I was headed. You know, we have, I have you, let me just ask you this as well, uh, before we go too far, cause we may just have to, um, if we really can go any farther with this application, we may just have to continue it and let you uh go back with the team and figure out what you wanna do. But have you discussed this project with the butters?
Yes, and the butters are uh on the line, the one that is uh on the site plan as Matthew McDonald and Alicia Por.
Okay, how about your one on Wayland Ave?
I believe they're on as well. We also have, I don't think we got to this, David, a few neighbors uh that also are within the three hundred um foot radius of the property that have uh voiced support for the project.
Okay, well, we, we have a letter dated February third from Ms. Lackey that was, I was asked to read it into the record, voicing some concerns, um, and asking some questions. So, again, if, if we need to sort of, kind of pause, stop, uh, and maybe continue this, you guys can go back and discuss and reset what you wanna do, how you wanna proceed, and whether you wanna file and, and proceed with that additional relief. I think that's, that's totally your discretion, right? Or you come up with a different plan and maybe you only need a finding, maybe if you do it and you don't need a variance, then, then it's a, a finding is, is typically pretty straightforward. Um, again, it's, it's not as difficult to, to try to um, to justify um as much as a variance is, so. Um, but, I mean, I was asked to read it into the record, there's a lot of questions about what you're proposing to do, but you may change, ultimately change what you wanna do and come back with a different project. So, um, I would ask that you um review this letter, it's in the public record, maybe you could ask them for a copy or the building department has a copy and you could ask for that. Um, and, and maybe take these things into consideration, cause it has to do with water drainage, lawn changes, outdoor lighting, loudspeakers, construction phase, um, and some sort of driveway encroachment. So, there's several aspects to this letter of concern, so I would just ask that you review that.
Sure.
Have a follow-up conversation with your neighbor.
Ha- happy to, Dave.
Okay. So, um, again, board members, I, I, I would argue that we, we probably just need to continue this, cause I don't know that we wanna go any further if we don't have the proper, yeah, requests in front of us, right? Um, uh, is, does anyone else have any comments or questions on, in this regard before we proceed?
Yeah, we'll regroup and a continuance would be, would be good, thank you.
Uh, board members, anyone else before we proceed? Are you? I just wanna give the other board members a chance in case there's any other aspect we wanna. Okay, so, um, so typically we continue things to say our next hearing, but I, I don't think you're gonna be ready to maybe come back in two weeks.
Right.
And certainly you may need more time, um, if you're gonna refile.
Certainly.
I'm trying to think. I'm looking at our meeting schedule, cause what, what we would do is we could continue to a future meeting and depending on what you do. And depending on what you decide to do with the project, you could come back to that hearing and if you weren't ready to proceed or maybe withdraw. We could withdraw this application, right? We could take a vote to withdraw this application if you requested it for the permit. And then if something else had been filed in the interim, then we would take it up in due course, right? But I want to give you an opportunity of time to do that, right? Oh, February ninth, our next meeting's February twenty-third. I don't know if the two weeks is enough time maybe to you, so in fairness, would you want to continue maybe to March ninth, four weeks from now?
Yeah, I think that's our preference.
Okay, again, you can come back and, and once you've figured out what you want to do, at least come back to that hearing. And we can, you know, dispense of the special permit if need be and then see what else is, is happening at that time with other filings potentially.
And will we need to refile before March ninth then?
You would, you should probably actively work this. Tonight, and if you figure out what you want to do and you need. Again, I think you absolutely need a finding to modify anything on the site, because it's existing, non-conforming. But whether, again, you proceed with this project, you'll need a variance and. And again, it speaks to. I think it's mainly that, that, that side setback. I don't know that it introduces other required relief, but you should look at that, right? The zoning table that's included in the site plan, we always look for that. But clearly, you know, you can't do anything about the lot area, lot size, but in terms of setbacks. Yeah, just make sure that all those proper side and rear side setbacks are accounted for. If that's where you're going, so I would work it after this meeting and, and if you're ready to file something new. You know, file it like you did this with the building department. Okay, so as soon as you know what you want to do. So with that, I think it's, we're going to continue to March ninth. And we'll see where we are at that point.
Mr. Chair, will we continue this to March ninth?
Thank you, any discussion on the motion? All right, board members, Joe.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I, yes. Okay, so thank you for attending and I appreciate your time. And good luck and we'll, we'll hear back from you in a future day.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Talk again soon.
Okay. All right, board members, any clerk or board comments this evening?
I don't have anything.
I'll mention again, Dave, I know that you've had conversation with the light department. That they do want to come in and talk to us about generally their process and how they might interface better with us. I had that conversation, basically, I've had several conversations on recent meetings that I've had. With, on Water Street and on Crescent Street, so it seems reasonable. That we tie a knot or at least have a connection between them and us. And developers in the future, because we've had some situations where obviously they've gone ahead and done something we didn't like. So, and I made my point with them on this as well, so I think it's a good time for dialogue when they're ready and when we're ready.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, two things, Mr. Chair, obviously I'm not here in two weeks. And that new forty B that's coming up, that you guys got the package today?
Yes.
So I work for those people, Nixon and Lopez, so I may have to recuse myself.
You probably will.
So I'm going to miss a lot of good meetings, I guess, but am I, am I able to stay on or do I have to sign off and all that?
Well, when, when we do open that hearing and during those hearings. I could put you in the waiting room, like I can park you in the waiting room in the, in the zoom, so kind of not part of the discussions. And then bring you back when we, you know, when we're on to other matters, so. You certainly attend meetings or just I'll park you in the, in the timeout space.
Dave, when you're in that parked location, can you hear and see the meeting?
No. That's the idea, you're in a waiting room, yeah, you don't hear or see anything.
Because I probably have the church coming up eventually.
Time out too.
I got my fingers, I got my fingers in that, I guess, as a consultant, so.
Yeah, no, it, it certainly would be perceived as a potential conflict of interest if you're that directly involved and then. The zoning board, you'd probably want to recuse yourself, Jim.
Yeah, it's actually on my resume too, I mean, I'm sure it wouldn't look. I've known him since I was six years old, so.
We can note that when the time comes, you know, for the record that, you know, you're using yourself and. Same with you, Jim, if there isn't any situation like that, just make it known in the public during the public hearing and we'll note it and it's on the record and it's in the minutes and. Yep, so anything else for tonight? I did have one thing, I'm just giving everyone else a chance, I did have one other comment. Okay, so my update pertains to the, the projects we've approved with various sort of off-site work we talked about. And that list that I put together, I did meet with, with the town engineer, town administrator and the building inspector. Earlier this week. And we went through the list and I would say for the most part, without going through every single thing, chapter and verse. For the most part, when there were conditions that said that applicant was going to pay us some money to cover some, some off-site work. Whether it was roadway work or landscape or something or, or traffic, they've done so. And in some cases, they've worked with the engineering department and they've gotten some other aspects worked into, to various parts of the project, so. There were no red flags, there didn't seem to be anything missing. And then there's stuff that hasn't started yet, like the new one on Foundry. And obviously Tarrant Lane and Greenwood and some of these others where they, they do have things, but they're just not at that stage where they would be. Entertaining any sort of, you know, external work or payments to the town or so forth. So, so it was a good discussion, I think we, we covered a lot of the ground. In Bill's opinion, we particularly, because he's involved in a lot of this, we were in pretty good shape with working with all these projects. Couple of things that came out of the discussion is, again, making sure that when we're doing these projects, especially the bigger ones where there's engineering input. Maybe traffic and, and fire, and they've got letters that they send this board with recommended conditions. We'd have to make sure that those conditions get in as written. Or, you know, reference their, their letters, that those conditions must be satisfied as well. We could do it either way, I think with, in different projects, we've either copied and pasted their conditions into our decision and some cases were referred to letters. But either way, it's, I think there've been a couple of cases Bill pointed out where. In an attempt to do that, maybe the wording changed or the way the condition was worded made it harder to enforce if the applicant maybe didn't do exactly what we really. Thought they, they would do, so the other thing we agreed is moving forward. Whenever there is input from other boards or town departments and they do have some conditions they'd like this board to consider. And, and have included is we would send the draft of decision around for their final review to make sure we got it right. And that way, there's, you know, it's just an extra check at the end, we got to build in a little review time, a few days here to, to get that, that final sign off. But I think it's, it's prudent to do so, especially on these larger ones, to give them an opportunity to review the draft decision. And make sure we properly accounted for the, the things they thought ought to be in the decision, right? Whether it's on a plan or as a condition itself. So we kind of agreed to do that. And that, I think, in summary, was pretty good. So any comments or questions on that?
So, so Dave, are you, are you saying that the monies that are, that are being, they're being set aside for that particular item? And they're not, they're not getting absorbed somewhere else on some other place?
No, I mean, it, it varies, it's not cut and dry, some are being held in, in a place for, for specific work. But for example, like Bennett Street, there was talk of this island out front. Landscaping in front, well, that has now become part of a larger envisioned project and so the money is, is going to be. Well, in that case, he didn't provide money, it said he'll pay for when, when they do it. But now that, that, that design has changed, so we, we may want to discuss with them maybe in lieu of. Them paying at the time, is the town's going to do that work and they make a financial contribution, right? And figure out what that appropriate amount might be. So there are cases where either was money paid or in some cases not, where it may just go into a larger pool to like improve roadwork. In the area like Harvard Mills, I think, or the Foundry, the one that's already done. They paid money for roadwork, but it's going to be part of when they do envision and they repaint Gold Street or that area of Alvin. It's going to go into that pot and they're not going to do it now, right? While there's still construction going on in this area, it's going to be part of a larger plan, you know, and say in the next few years. When they agree it's the right time to pave that area, that money will be used towards that, right? So it's, it's, they know where the money is, it's, it's accounted for, it's just it may not go specifically for a specific thing. That was in a condition, it might be part of a larger thing, like with some of the stuff the town's doing.
Do we know, do we know, or did you find out on? Six hundred North Ave up there at those two buildings, did money get paid out towards the sidewalks? Or are they waiting for, they're waiting for the DPW to come back and, you know, do the work? How did, how is that working out?
Yeah, he's got to follow up with them, because it's on the plan, we confirmed it's on the plan, they just haven't done it. So I think we're going to either the DPW. Let's see, the, 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 amend decision. Right, so they said amend, maybe we look at amending the decision to accept payment in lieu of. Because again, you know, who's going to do the sidewalk, it's most likely the town's going to oversee that. And, and so do they make a contribution, right? Versus, you know, having it on the plan and waiting for them to do it. So there's a few of these that probably need follow-up with the engineering department and the applicant or their attorneys to say, hey. This was in the plan, this was on a condition, it's not done yet, here's what we'd like to see to move this forward and ensure that it does get done. You know, in most cases by the town.
Yeah, because North Ave is going to take even longer now with the new one coming, they're going to say, oh, let's wait and do it all together, so now another three or four years.
Link up, yes.
And he did say that, he said, yeah, the new one coming would have it too and then it, and I think he said even beyond that, they're looking to extend it even beyond. That proposed site maybe further down, so again, it becomes part of a larger thing that might be done a few years from now. But it would get done, it, it's just the application, the applicant didn't pay money for it, they, it was in the plan to do it, so what do we do now? It seems like the prudent thing is to maybe get them to contribute towards it for the part that would be in front of their property. Because they did agree to do it at one time, so.
I was going to ask about that, is there a reason we're putting the sidewalk there when there's like no other sidewalk? Like you've got to walk over there and have to stop across the street again, is, is it in the future plan that they're going to put a sidewalk down that whole North Ave? Is that the plan?
Some of it has it, the residential areas, some of it has.
I feel like you'd just be going from back and forth, cross the street to sidewalk, most of, you know.
Well, and, and, and North Avenue is very busy, so if you can keep the pedestrians to one side, one side or the other. And, you know, in front of the dealership, they have a sidewalk and so does the hair salon.
So then it seems to end at the VFW and then not.
The more sidewalks, the better though, I mean. Right.
I understand, I just, I, I didn't know if that was the final goal, is to get the sidewalk all the way down to the center.
Well, the town, the, the engineering department would, would have a sense of what the larger, you know, they've got these, these grander plans, not just envisioned and sort of close to downtown. But some of these other areas and certainly like they're looking at two hundred quarter powered and down the road, how that tie in and, you know, some of the contributions that, that. Applicant would make, which Brian spoke of and getting that, that worked out. Because anything that comes there is going to be years from now, so. But we got to, we got to account for it now.
We should be looking for these projects to better, to better the circumstance, basically, we shouldn't be waiting for the town. We should, or the town to fund these things, they're, they're making money basically on this. On this, so why not have betterments basically for this? I mean, there's a lot of towns, a betterment comes for new water lines or something else, basically. And well, let's just take. The Harvard Mills, they've done a lot of infrastructure in there because of the mill. And that all, infrastructure is pretty, probably pretty damn old and need to be replaced anyway, so Harvard Mills replaced it. We haven't paid for anything, in fact, they're going to pay for basically the roadway. So we need to hold projects accountable to betterments and not be paying that after a project goes in. From our town coffers.
Yep, so it's something for us to consider in future decisions about. Okay, it's nice to show that, that we envisioned something being done on a plan, but in terms of a condition, it probably needs to be in the form of some. Financial contribution to the town, so the town does it at the right time in, in concert perhaps with, you know. The project site and, and the representatives of it, but, but there's a financial contribution to be held. For that and not just have a condition that says that the applicant will do it. You know, if the town lets them, right? And we got to get away from that, like if the town lets them stuff, so I, Bill had some good feedback on like, you know, properly wording conditions. Making them more enforceable, maybe looking towards financial contributions instead of saying, you'll do it in accordance with the, you know, if the town lets you do it. Or you'll make reasonable efforts to do something, because how do you define reasonable efforts? So again, tightening the language and writing them in a way that are enforceable. And, and, yeah, and, you know, so they're contributing to things that, you know, around the site. Whether it's traffic, utilities, sidewalks, tree planting, right, landscaping stuff. So we, we take it into consideration during the hearings and we, and that's another reason to get the draft. Get the letters from these departments, you know, really internalize what they're asking for, what they think ought to be in there and then give them a chance to review the draft decisions. So we're all in agreement, what we think we need from the, these applications and these approved projects for the betterment of the town and the surrounding area. You know, so anyway, it was a good meeting, happy to have more discussion certainly with them if, if we want. But anyway, that's, that, that's it for now, I think. All right. Anything else for the evening, otherwise I think we just have some minutes to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes of February ninth, two thousand twenty-two?
Nope, can't approve the minutes of tonight's meeting yet. They don't exist yet.
Nice try.
Yeah, January, yeah, what was that, January? I'm already in Hawaii.
I have a second on the motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-sixth. Thank you, all right, all in favor, Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, good job, girl. All right, that's it, thank you for your time, tonight, board members. And this meeting is now adjourned.
I moved to adjourn.
Oh yeah, let's do that. Any discussion, all right, Craig?
Yes.
Mamie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes, all right, now we're in adjournment, thank you.